We'll call this meeting to order for the record. It is January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two at four thirty-one P. M. We will begin this afternoon's city council work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton is here. Councilwoman Perro. Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Hovland. Mayor Simison.
Here.
And Councilman Borton is here shortly.
Which makes him absent for the moment. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilman Hovland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. First item up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hovland.
I move to approve the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to prove the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. No items removed from the consent agenda, so we will move on to department commission reports. And first item up is item seven, a community development department net zero budget amendment in the amount of five hundred one thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars regarding the CDBG grant. Crystal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a net zero budget, as you had mentioned, to request spending authority for our CDBG grant. All of the projects were approved on our action plan, so it's really just to accept the funding and be able to spend it.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I move that we approve the net zero budget amendment in the amount of five hundred one thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars to accept the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two community development block grant award.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Hovland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. Thank you. Next item is from our community development department regarding the development pipeline, growth projections, and legal guidance. Councilman Hovland, would you like to start with any comments or would you like to hear from staff first?
Mr. Mayor, just I'd like to make a few brief comments, if I may. This is kicking off kind of a series of meetings that we'll be holding regarding growth in our community and things related to school enrollment. What we're going to hear this afternoon is from Caleb Hood, who's going to kind of go over our growth in our community, what's in the development pipeline, those types of things that are that are coming from a city perspective. And it's not to get into enrollment numbers and those types of things, but this is to give us background and information on what is going on in our community and kind of what's what we can look at down the road. Also, Bill Neri and Kurt Starman from our legal department are going to give us some a tutorial, if you will, under on annexations and moratoriums. What does that mean? What are the processes? We just have to, we throw these terms out, we talk about them, but I don't think we sometimes fully understand the implications or limitations that they might have. So it's just to give us an understanding as as we move forward and the next step will be the school district coming to talk about their metrics and how they are now calculating their enrollment numbers and whatnot. So this is the first step, then we'll have that second step. And ultimately, we would like to get together with the school administrators and school board down the road. It'll be several months from now and and have a discussion with them. So this is just a continuation of our process of understanding what's going on in our community and how our partners are impacted in the education industry. But tonight is more about the facts and what we have here within our community from our city development process. So with that, Mr. Mayor, good to hear from staff.
Thank you, Councilman Hovland. So with that, I'll turn this over to Mr. Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council President. I appreciate those opening remarks and there will be some implications into what I present and what you see this afternoon. But we are going to be be pretty factual here and really focus in on what we've seen for applications and lots and sticking to the script here as far as it is on the the agenda for this workshop. I am going to take them in a little bit different order, starting with some of the the actuals and then getting into growth projections, pipeline stuff, but and then again, legal will talk at the end. So I'm I'm going to share some historical data on dwelling units, lots, and residential entitlements in general. First of all, I had a lot of help, Bill Parsons, Miranda Carson, Brian McClure, and Ryan in I T in particular over the last couple of weeks preparing for this. We had some holes in both accessing or mining the data in our database and what was put in the database originally. Sometimes people didn't put in the number of lots proposed with the plat. So we had a lot of cleaning up the database to kind of fix some holes. There may still be some out there, but I'm pretty confident what you see here is within tens of units, not within hundreds of units. So the margin of error here, and again, props to those people for helping get get us to this point today. So again, there's still some work to do, but the tables, graphs, graphs and maps I'm going to show have come a long way just in the past couple of weeks. I typically use notes, but I just made a note here for myself when I present, but I may largely read my notes to you today. There are details in here that I don't want to miss. And so if I don't make eye contact, I apologize. I'm not one for trying to just read from my script, but I do think I have some things that I definitely want to want to touch on. So the first one, you've probably already, it's probably already caught your eye.
Mr. Hood, just real quick, just for the record, Councilman Borton joined us at four thirty-five, so public knows he's in the room.
And I'm glad he did as well. I'm glad that the whole council is here because this has been, as Council President pointed out, been a somewhat of a topic of discussion. The modeling that's been talked about in the request for some of that, I think, plays into some of this presentation. So I'm glad you all are here. So the first tab is historical data. The numbers in this table are largely from finance and what the city's growth committee uses. So I want to point out just a couple of things in this table. Again, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but you can see the number, number of single family and multifamily households per year. Add those together gives you the total number. What we've added in there is just a year over change. So from twelve to thirteen, for example, we added thirteen hundred new dwelling units and so on and so forth. So you can kind of see how many total dwelling units were added and where we stand today is right around forty thousand single family residential dwelling units. So forty-eight thousand in total when you add the multifamily in. I colored these or these are colored purple just because they are projections. These are the actual numbers from finance that we recognize largely based on permit sales, right? So you need a water meter type of a thing, and so each unit is accounted for that way. I'll get into that a little bit, little, little bit more. But again, these are city-generated dwelling units largely from finance. Some of the other information you show on here, again, sort of the work in progress a little bit. Our data gets more and more reliable the closer to today you get. But you spent some time backfilling in the last few years, again, some more work to go on eighteen, seventeen, sixteen to provide you a little bit more on how much we've approved. And even you can see here, pretty confident in these numbers, but essentially if you add the estimated to the known, it gives you roughly two thousand preliminary platted units in twenty nineteen and seventeen hundred for the past calendar year twenty twenty-one. I should say, at any time, feel free to stop me. You know, if I'm going too fast for clarification or whatever on 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 any of this. I will point out, as we move to final plats, pretty confident in those numbers. We, Miranda left estimated in here, but really there's no, we think we've captured them all up here, so pretty confident in these numbers. Again, just some things in here where maybe we don't have all of them, so a little bit of a disclaimer on that one. And then building permits. So I mean, that's the general cadence, right? Preliminary plat, final plat, building permit to occupancy. So kind of the last thing in there would be your unit counts. These are new units then for building permits issued per year for the last decade or so. So I believe that was a request. Some of our data, again, we'll look at two or three-year trends. We did go back a decade, though, for some of the historical numbers. I'm going to scroll down. I can scroll back up. This one, it doesn't really tell you much.
Mr. Hood.
Can I ask a question?
Councilman Pro.
Mr. Hood.
Yep, Councilman Pro.
Thank you. And the preliminary plats approved are, those are plats that are approved and not yet final platted? Or are those preliminary plats that were approved, there were three thousand and then twenty-two sixty of those have been final platted?
So what this doesn't do, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, what this doesn't do is that math for you. So it doesn't, there's not a running total and subtract that from this plat, so you know how many final plat lots are left. This is just a total citywide. So in that year, we preliminary platted this many, final platted this many. Some of the ones are final plating now may have been from twenty seventeen. So if that makes sense, so this is just the total number, not the running total, if that makes sense. And I'll get, I think, a little bit more of what you're asking for, your question in one of the next slides. But again, this is just total. So there could be duplication, could count a preliminary plat here and a final plat there, or preliminary plat nineteen and a final plat in twenty-one.
Mr. Hood, one other question. Your building permits issued unit counts versus the top one total joint units by type with the numbers done align year over year.
Right. So almost the same thing with that. So the way I can explain that, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I asked Miranda the same question and Brian. There's a lag, right? So you issue a building permit, but doesn't actually get occupancy typically within the same calendar year. It's a six-month or so construction timeframe. So you will have a lag. Typically, though, you pull a bidding permit, you get occupancy, but it doesn't necessarily happen within the same calendar year.
I assume that was the case. I just want to make sure.
It should all add up.
On the record, people, it's the data.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And then, again, just real quickly, this doesn't add a whole bunch of value, but I think it kind of goes with the same. Again, it all adds up at the end. Whatever your preliminary plat, you're probably going to final plat, you're probably going to have a building permit pulled for. But it doesn't all happen within the same year. So you can have a whole bunch of preliminary plats one year and hardly any final plats. And the next year, a bunch of final plats and hardly any preliminary plat. So this graph is just to kind of show that, that I don't want to say it's random because you have to have preliminary, you have to have a pool of preliminary plats, the final plat to get to occupancy. But it does kind of ebb and flow with what we're highest in. Are we, are we strong in final plats this season or are we stronger in building permits? So really, there isn't a correlation when you're looking at it in a year of of that thing. So again, I'm not going to dwell there, but just they're not all trending at the same rate, but over time they will. Okay, so the second tab then. So that's kind of our baseline, if you will. This is, this is where we are today, if you will, right? As far as residential dwelling units in Meridian. The next part of the request and what's on the agenda, then, if it'll go there. Zoom. Maybe add a little bit. Be a little small, but try to get all that on one on the screen. So this is kind of the next phase. So this is entitled lands. So one of the issues we ran into when we got into this exercise, trying to show how many unbuilt units or lots are already approved. That was the fact that some projects are annexed or rezoned without that information. For example, council from time to time annexes property with only a concept plan. That plan and the corresponding development agreement may or may may or more likely may not have any units associated. So what we've done is assign historic density that's been built to those properties by zoning designation. So this tab shows what can generally be expected on top of existing dwelling units from the previous slide as entitled. So to put that maybe a little more clearly, right? So R fifteen, you can come and get annexation to R fifteen, but if you don't have a concurrent C P or plat, we don't know exactly how many dwelling units. But time has told us that R fifteen, on average, we get thirteen point eight two dwelling units per acre. So what we've done is we've taken those, that land area that we have in the city, and as of this week, we have a hundred ninety-three acres of R fifteen zoned land that's undeveloped right just yet. So we've assigned this thirteen point eight two to a hundred ninety-three, and that gets us it's rounded, right? But twenty-seven hundred new dwelling units. So when you take those for all of our zoning districts and extrapolate that out again to all those that didn't have a plat or haven't platted or final platted yet, you could add another roughly thirteen thousand, seven hundred dwelling units to the total. So that's, if you will, that's what we've committed to, to just put it in layman's terms. These are, these are more that we can give or take. We're on the hook for providing services to that many more dwelling units. I guess that's kind of a simple way of stating that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
A quick question, Caleb, on the undeveloped acres, meaning there's not a preliminary plat that went with it. It's only concept.
So in this one, it, there could be a preliminary plat that hasn't developed yet. So they haven't. Just make sure I got my notes right on that one.
Reason to ask is, is there is there any double counting?
So no, that's what we're, that's what we tried to avoid. To fill in the gaps from the previous slide that had preliminary and final plats, this doesn't double count those land areas.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. Do we happen to know how many of those acres are the area in the south side of Meridian that was annexed? Or the intent of helping, you know, set our boundaries versus what would have actually been requested by applicants outside of?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pro, if you're okay, if we put a pin in that for just a second, I wasn't prepared to go exactly there, but we have a cool tool that I'm going to show you at the end that maybe we can use that as a case study to to see if we can find the answer to that. If you're, if you're okay pausing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's Liz.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you, Caleb. So this is really helpful. I guess one thing I'm curious. So this shows as kind of a snapshot in time our like total pipeline of future development could take years, could take ten years. Do we have any comparison point over time, even if it was like five years ago or something, what this total pipeline looked like? Or a way of knowing it's twice as much or it's the same or just kind of a historical context for it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, I think we could do that because we have this information that I put back on the screen here. So we could go see how many plats we had back there to see how many entitled land that we had before the dwelling units came on. I will just say again, and I kind of glossed over it a little bit, but the year over change, right? I mean, there's, there's your trends. You can kind of look and see, that doesn't, that doesn't tell you your inventory, but tells you your absorption.
Right.
On, you know, two to three thousand kind of is what we've been averaging over the last handful of years. Obviously, that's up higher than it was at the five-year bucket been, you know, before that. But no, I don't, we can look into that. I don't have an easy way today to find that. But we could look and say, okay, yeah, five years ago, what, what did your annexed yet undeveloped number look like?
Yeah, thank you. I was just curious if there is a big deviation from that, you know, quote, total pipeline of potential development compared to past years. But I understand. So maybe that could be a future data point, I guess.
Before you move on, sorry, I will just also say we do the, Brian puts together the land use report annually, and we can even look back on that report, say, I think we've only been doing that maybe four years now. So maybe it doesn't go quite back as far as you'd like, but it does have some of these numbers. So if you look at the historical land use report that we publish every year and get the oldest version we have, it'll, it'll generally tell you some of that information, too. So sorry to interrupt.
Okay, no, thank you. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I should say, that may actually be better because the large annexation we did in the south with that holding patterns is going to put a line in the sand anyways for the usable years of historical data. Because that would have been sixty-five hundred R four. I know it wasn't all R four, but for example, that would have been about the number that would have changed in the pipeline just by that addition. If sixteen hundred was the right number, was that how many acres?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I don't remember. And that, that was twenty sixteen, I believe. So if we found on the twenty fifteen.
So as long as we're, you think twenty seventeen forward, it would be apples, you would be able to see that trend. Anything before that, we'd have to extrapolate out that probably to have meaningful data.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Caleb, is it possible to get an Excel copy of this data if it's more updated than the Open Gov dashboard? I would just love to play around a little bit with some numbers I'm running.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, and there's the council. So again, you guys are ahead of me a step or two. We are, we have some tools that we're going to share with you that I think can probably do a lot of, you know, you can have fun and you can play and you can zoom and crop and filter and sort and do all kinds of stuff. So I think, let me show you some of those things. And if it doesn't do what you want it to do, I think we can get you there. And I can definitely share the Excel, you know, these couple of sheets, and we have some more. I'm not planning on going through them today, but I've got some other spreadsheets and charts and tables that are associated, but just in the interest of time. I think these are the most important ones that kind of get to the heart of the matter, but there's more data behind that that I certainly can share, so. Okay, just maybe a couple more notes on this one before I leave it. And Councilman Borton, this may answer some of your question, too. I just wanted to note this, that if council wants to continue to track this type of information in the long term, which it sounds like you do, you're interested in this. Planning will likely push and even require all proposed annexations or rezonings that don't include a plat or a detailed C P for multifamily to propose a residential density that we could then put into a D A with a range or a cap or maybe some wiggle room of twenty percent up or down, but it helps us populate this going forward to say, we're generally committing to this many number. We realize sometimes you don't know exactly how many. But give us a range or a cap or something that we can kind of put a general number to and say, okay, well, let's allocate that much growth to that parcel. So Bill and I talked about that today. I think we'll take that to, those go through the planning and zoning commission, but I think we're going to change our, unless you guys are like, no, don't require the development community to do that. I think we're going to ask them to say, you want this, you don't have a plan for it. Give us, what's your cap you're proposing on that residential density? We'll evaluate that through the staff analysis process and then in a D A will say you can build up to this or whatever that process looks like. But I want to just get some head nods and it looks like generally everyone's okay with that. So then we can, again, really understand the impact of density long term. And then the unit count in this table is, again, and then, I think I should just read my note before I took more questions. But the unit count in this table is annexed but undeveloped as of January first. What that means is any parcel within Meridian zoning that hasn't developed yet. So the property is annexed and maybe platted even, but no structure has been granted occupancy yet. So I think that that's a better answer than mine. So it may have a building permit, but it hasn't been granted occupancy. So it doesn't show, it's not double counted because it's not a dwelling unit yet. It's still under construction, doesn't have occupancy. Okay, I think everyone understands that and the, and C G in particular. So when C G is a mixed-use zone and we can get multifamily and mixed-use, that's the other thing to just call their attention here. So C C and C G allow multifamily developments with a conditional use permit, but they're largely non-residential zones. That's where you get your commercial uses, your restaurants, all that good stuff. So when you look at it, a citywide average, it really brings your average down because you only average about a dwelling unit in those areas. But the whole thing's on C G, but ninety percent of it is commercial. So that's one of the the problems we had here, but we keep using the citywide average because we don't have a better thing to do. That was just the methodology we kept. But just to call that out, this may be low because if you get, again, a wholly multifamily project in C G, you're probably in the fifteen dwelling units per acre range typically. So maybe a little low. So just a caveat on that one in particular, C G. One point four three, we the residential portions, residential land use portions of property zone C G, we certainly get more than one point four three dwelling units per acre. Okay, I think those are my notes. Okay, so we've looked at the historical dwelling units, entitled and eminent dwelling units, and the last factor then that I was going to cover are in-process dwelling units or pending applications. So this is largely Bill's side of the house and things that are, that are in process coming, staffs reviewing them. They haven't been acted on yet by you, but these are applications, my cursor. These are applications that we've accepted and began to process, but they haven't been through the hearing process just yet. So again, you could potentially add these to the two tables we saw before, but these are pending review and approval. So some or all of these may be approved, but some of them may not be, so. So just to do a little bit of that math, I didn't do this, but again, we have, you know, roughly forty-five, fifty thousand plus the thirteen, seven of entitled but not yet developed units. You could add all those up for, to figure out again what we have on the books and what you can expect for the foreseeable future. Again, I will, and Councilwoman Strater, I think, alluded to this a little bit. We talked about it. You only absorb, we only absorb twenty-five hundred to three thousand-ish dwelling units per year. So we may have thirteen or fourteen thousand in the queue, but we can only go so fast. And so historically, we've only issued permits and occupied roughly twenty-five hundred, at least over the last five years. So just keep that in mind. We won't absorb all fourteen thousand of them next year, or at least I hope not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Caleb, could you, I apologize if I missed this. These are preliminary plats that are both being reviewed by planning staff or have all been approved by council.
These are only ones that have, they haven't been to council. So they may, they're in various, they, they maybe have been through the planning and zoning commission, but maybe not. Maybe we just scheduled it for hearing and they're hearing it P and Z's coming up, or they've been through P and Z, but not to you. Maybe they're on your docket next week, but they haven't been approved yet. So they're somewhere in that process of between application acceptance and scheduling for hearing and ordinance. They haven't been approved by you yet. The other note I'll make on that is we have another handful, five or six, I think Bill told me earlier today that have been submitted but have not done a completeness review or are waiting on some other things for them to be, to get to that point where we say, okay, you're complete. We're going to schedule you for hearing now. So we already have some that are even in the pre-pipeline, if you want to call it that, that are waiting and are really close, but we're still needing a couple of things from them to deem them complete so we can begin this process. So
Mr. Mayor.
Again, tell that story, but there's even more coming than what's on this slide.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
So Caleb, would it be fair to say, then, looking at this, that we have just under, I guess you're totaling each column, so it's just under two thousand additionally? No, I guess it would be, sorry, I'm just looking at this for like twelve hundred units in southeast Meridian, then specifically that are in this kind of pending bucket that we would expect to see in the next year come before us. Is that accurate?
So, Mr. Mayor, I would say even within the next three or four months.
Okay, wow. Okay. Wow.
Cause typically it's about 45 days to get before the planning and zoning, and then roughly another 30 days to get to you. So this even, this isn't even a year's worth of now, again, things can get continued. You may not act on them, but yeah, these ones are again, if I had a ballpark, it's probably closer to six months than a year, maybe nine months, but yeah, so not inaccurate, but within the year, you'll do more than what you see on here.
Right. That makes sense with the 2,500 units a year approximately that are kind of coming through. Thank you.
And so this is one of the tools that, um, so these are pending. So again, that's what we've asked for. You could go to approved, if you wanted to see that, and you could see what those values look like in our demographic areas. So we broke the city up into eight demographic areas. So again, this was some of the questions and some of the cool tools that you can play with if you'd like and look at some of those, and even, you know, Meridian West, look at the multifamily to single family ratio of approved, single family, and you can play by that by year, you can sort it by year, by dwelling unit type, whatever, and it'll give you the again, by demographic area. And I've got another one that the dashboard, we call the dashboard that I'll show next, that you can even do some more. But even on this slide, um, active would be no. So this is something that's been approved. I think this is for 18, 19, 20 and 21, I believe. Do you remember Bill, if this one's? No, I'm sorry. These are the pending ones. Sorry. So these, again, these are the same six months worth of things coming. Approved. So this should have changed, I guess, a little bit, right? There you go. That looks better. Sorry. I saw the numbers down here. So again, you can change some of these and it'll update the, the table with whatever you select. Okay. So the last thing I wanted to show you is the next map. Before I jump to the map, the, the dashboard itself, I wanted to just give you this, this shows the demographic, the eight demographic areas that Meridian has broken down into. Uh, we worked with Compass, it's probably been two or three years now on some of these boundaries. This, for the most part, matches our city limits really well. Before they were using like state highways, which made some sense from their perspective, but we worked with them on some of these borders. So it really is Northeast Meridian, not Northeast Meridian and some of Northwest Boise. So I'm pretty proud of that, that our demographic areas actually match our future city limit boundaries pretty well. So I'm going to show you that real quick and then I'm going to jump to the actual dashboard. Want to do the presentation? Sorry about that. Okay. So what the, the, um, this dashboard is, has permit data from 2018 to yesterday. So every night our database updates with information from Ada County. And so this information is valid as of 12:30 AM or whenever it updates. And it has, right now I've got turned on all permits. So it includes obviously commercial and residential. For again, 2018, 19, 20, 21, and, and so far into 22, not that far into 22.
Mr. Mayor, are those only building permits?
So these are, uh, yes.
TIs for commercial, are they?
So this includes residential, commercial. I will note that all permits does not include additions, remodels, TIs, et cetera. It only shows new residential and commercial permit activity. Thank you. Um, and you can play with this again, if you want to get into different, and that's why I showed the last one. The boundaries of those demographic areas are a little bit hard because this map gets a little busy, but each ring represents, and the bigger the ring, the more dwelling units represents a permit issued. So you can, again, you could sort it by year, you could sort it by area, you could sort it by year and area. I will note just another quick note, if you select residential, if you look, this looks a little odd right now. I don't know. Why? Let me make it bigger real quick. But if you just click on residential, you'll notice that all 7,800 permits we've done in 18, 19, 20, 21 are single family. Well, that's because multifamily is technically a commercial building permit. So it doesn't show up here. So if you're going here to look for a ratio of single family, multifamily, you won't get that here because again, technically for the building code, multifamily is a commercial building permit. So just wanted to, um, call that to your attention real quick. So again, there's a lot of stuff in here. You can see the, the valuation of those permits. And again, that's, there's somewhat of an honor system, right? The valuation permit is whatever the puller of the permit says there's going to be worth. So that's based on not the assessor's value, but just through our building permit process, what each permit value is, is tied to. So anyways, there's a lot here. I don't know what you want, but want, want to look at or any of it. This is a cool tool, but to orient you would probably, you know, there's, there's a lot of layers that you can turn on, off zoning and future land use and basically anything sewer sheds and all kinds of stuff we could put over the top of this. So we've really got it paired back right now, just for ease to look at demographic areas. So this is, uh, Councilwoman, um, Pro. If we wanted to look at South Meridian a little bit more, quite frankly, that is split into two different demographic areas. And I'm not an expert at this yet. So you'd have to select both of them or look at one and then add it to the other to see how many of those acres we turn zoning on. And they'll kind of, I think it should be pretty evident even when we look at it just like this, um, because the projects say like Apex, right? Was done originally with that mass annexation, but it's come in since for some plating. So some of those show permits that have been built, but you can tell where a lot of them haven't. I, I don't have the acreage, but w- we could get that, um, I'm sure. So again, that's probably not the best use of our time to go and figure out how many acres that were annexed in 2016 were there, but we could come up with that total of properties that were annexed with that South Meridian, uh, annexation that are, have some level of entitlement. And Mayor, to your point, here's one of those lands that we actually didn't give R4 to, they got some R15. I think this is the R15 and this is the CG, this may be R8. So there is, most of it was R4, but they negotiated some higher, then some higher, um, zoning on that area. So I know that didn't fully answer your question, but it is possible. I just didn't do that math before this meeting, so I can circle back. But again, this tool, um, has a little bit better access to questions like that. So, okay, before I turn it over to Kurt, I think just, uh, for again, some of that legal guidance is stated on the agenda, a couple of notes on entitlements. And I know most of you understand, uh, the discretion you have with the various application types, but I, I really do want to reinforce this a little bit. Uh, related to the day, the data in table two in particular, that once a property is annexed and zoned, we are essentially committed to allowing development. So at that stage, you have a lot of discretion in whether to approve or deny, condition or accept as is. Post-annexation though, city code really controls a lot of that discretion, that discretion goes away. So that said, you and, and the planning and zoning commission, in the case of a conditional use permit, I have quite a bit of discretion in that realm. There should be a nexus between any condition and the impact of a proposed project, but essentially any condition should be included to mitigate the impact of approval. Moving further down that discretion spectrum, um, on preliminary plots. So the UDC title 11 includes the standards for new plots and subdivisions. There are some elements that are gray, like the appropriateness of a proposed amenity perhaps, but most of how a plat is reviewed is black and white and code and either meet the dimensional standards or you don't. So again, once a project gets zoning and the plaque conforms to dimensional and other standards, you see very difficult to deny something like that. So final plots even further down the spectrum, then practically no discretion. And I'm not in the building department, but essentially the same holds true there at the building permit stage. If the zoning and building codes are met, we issue a permit. So again, at the annexation or rezone stage, the city is making a commitment to serve the property and allow it to develop. Just, uh, more of an example on that, uh, public works accounts for future dwellings and their ERUs. And they take the capacity out very early in the process of what they have in capacity in, in modeling, um, very early, because they need to account for that. Cause again, it's assumed that it's going to go forward. So with that, I will, uh, turn it over to Kurt unless there's any questions for me and obviously I'll stick around. So he can do his thing too, and I, we can.
Yeah. Why don't we stay, stay right here for a few minutes?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Couple of questions unrelated to each other. The, the piece that, that we're, we discussed quite a bit in regard to school enrollment is not only the numbers, but how quickly, um, they will, you know, they'll be occupied. Different from area to area, developer to developer, but at some point we do ask them for a phasing plan. What, at what point in the process do we ask for that? And can that information be requested earlier rather than later? So that that can be kind of plugged into this, um, these spreadsheets as what we expect to see happen in the next three to four years.
Good question. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro. So we asked for the phasing plan at the preliminary plat stage. So we get a phasing plan. What the, what that phasing plan doesn't do though, is put a timeline to that. It just says, I'll do phase one, then phase two, then phase three, then phase four. They could do all four of those in one year. It just says, I'm going to go one, two, this is from north to south or east to west or north, south, east, whatever. We haven't historically done that. And I guess I would, obviously you all can do whatever you want. I would caution you a little bit on tying them to a phasing plan too much, just for the burden that that puts on staff. A little bit. So just a little perspective there. I'm not saying what trumps what, but if you were to say you can do phase one in 2022 and phase two in 2024 and phase three in 2026 or whatever, that's on us then to track it. If someone tries to pull a building permit, it, you're, we're the backstop that enforces that. And we just don't have the capacity to go and figure out, and we've got to hunt and peck and find, and just, let's talk that through a little bit before we jump to something like that and hold a phasing plan to a, you can do a plat a year for the next 10 years. It's possible. And if you want to do that, we can go there, but I just, again, let's think that through a little bit on how logistically that will work. Cause again, you get those at preliminary plots, we historically haven't tied that to, you get one phase a year, or you get 50 lots a year or whatever we we, I can't think of a project we've ever done that for at the final plat stage. I would just say, this is just my two cents. If you're that concerned about it, I'd rather deny the project because you're committing to, you're saying, welcome to the city of Meridian. We'd love to have you as soon, but we're written out. We're saying, no, we'd like to, we can kind of have you. Really, you need to look at it and assume those are coming online. Again, that's what public works does, that 200 lots, they know they're not all flushing toilets tomorrow, but they got to remove that from their capacity numbers to know what's really for the next one, how much they have left. You've got to subtract that. So, sorry, I'll stop, but you have the information, you can do with it what you want, and, and we can even highlight that more in a staff report. Here's the phasing plan. If that's really what you want to see, but again, right now they're not tied to a year.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Um, from what I've seen, they, the phasing plans are also intended for how they plan on building out and selling. So perhaps I wasn't aware that I, I've not yet seen a development that has built multiple phases all at one time and sold them all at one time. But so maybe that's my misunderstanding.
And maybe just to clarify, so the phasing plan is really just to record the plots. They could pill, you know, they could record 200 lots and pull building permits wherever they want within the subdivision. So the phasing is the phasing of the plat and the recordation. Okay. So they're going to put the public infrastructure in for, they could put all the streets and, and open space and never pull a building permit if they wanted to and go and record phase two. So there is a little bit of a disconnect even with, you don't have to have phase one built out as far as occupied. You can, you could, again, in theory, someone could record one final plat that has 300 lots in it. You just have to have all the roads built and all the amenities in before you can pull your first building permit. That's why you get phases.
Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. I, yes, that, that happened quite a bit actually in the mid 2000s, which caused a lot of sitting inventory when the market shifted. So the, the multifamily versus single family, sort of the big picture ratios, you showed a slide here that looks like we're about one third, two thirds on, um, I didn't know what the criteria was that I had seen. But, um, it, does the comprehensive plan, did, did we set like a desired ratio of multifamily versus single family? And, and has that conversation been had and, and is, if not, maybe it's not necessary because maybe just the, the zoning itself will limit how that plays out, but do we have some sort of idea of, you know, if we were to get to a point that we thought multifamily was that we had too much multifamily in relationship to a single family or, you know, townhome or just keeping a balance?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pro. So no, that is not addressed as a goal or a vision for the city in our comprehensive plan as far as the ratio of, um, single family to multifamily. We do have policies in the comprehensive plan, talking about, we want to be a community that has a mix of different housing types, but that doesn't go to the point of 80, 20 or, or whatever. No, there's no, no real talk about that. We do have some other policies in there that talk about, you know, the distribution. We don't want to put all the multifamily right along Eagle Road necessarily. We want, you know, it should be generally intermixed in different demographic areas. We have looked at it as staff, we've looked at just, okay, what's, for a healthy community, what, what do you get? What are, what are other cities? What's a, what's a normal number of mix of, and, and it really is all over the place. I mean, you can, you can see our ratio certainly has jumped way up. I mean, look at today, right? I mean, that, that's a lot different than we were 10 years ago. For sure. No doubt about it. I, I will, I think this, this may help a little bit. So again, I don't have those numbers and I can't tell you the best practice in the planning profession is to have 25% multifamily. I'm not aware of any study that says in a community, this is what your target should be for homeownership, rentals, multifamily, single family. Every community is a little bit different. And I think again, a mix and opportunities are what it's about, not a ratio. Um, I'm going to show you just real quick, because I think this, um, also, uh, helps anyways to your question. So this is Compass. So this will just show you in Ada Canyon County, then that's the top of my table. That ratio. So if you look down here, percent multifamily manufactured. So you can see other communities then. So to your question, at least in the valley, where other cities and, and counties at with their ratio. So if you look at the percentage, that year, and, and again, we can do some of the math and show some other tables, but it shows you generally what other cities in the area are doing as far as single family and multifamily, they include multifamily and manufactured, right? But, um, yeah. So we have some, we have access to things like that and we, we track it, but we are certainly it's a shift. And I'm glad you asked the question because we have shifted and we've seen a lot of multifamily come in our inventory, but there still seems to be a market for it. I'm, they're going to stop building it when people aren't renting anymore, right? I, but I don't know what long-term, what is 35% too much? I, I don't know.
Caleb, one of the things that, um, I think some of the council was hoping that we would see is what's currently been, has an active application in the pipeline. You know, Councilman Hogan has made the comment that whatever, if we're going to make a policy decision about how we want to treat, do we treat it from a certain date moving forward or not? Any idea what the, everything from annexations? You know, what, what are the current applications that are out there? Is there a way to identify them?
So Mayor, maybe I don't.
And the type, because I think the questions are, should annexations be different than a rezone or a final plat or? Yeah. What's the best way to get a listing of all applications which are currently submitted? At least so council can get an idea about the immediacy pipeline. Cause you know, they made a decision to continue one application until essentially five months from their last hearing. And I think the question is, is as if that's an approach they want to take, I think it's important to figure out what is, what's coming? Do we have 30 annexations coming for R4 multifamily in the next two months?
So Mr. Mayor, I'm going to put Bill on the spot here a little bit. So the numbers that are on the screen now is, uh, particularly up here are lots, that doesn't equate to application. So that I know that doesn't, then that's where I'm going to put him on the spot and see if he remembers how many applications that are in the pipeline, this actually equates to, plus the five or six that are.
I, I, I submit we have a list of everything. Would it be possible just to get a list sent out to council of the active applications, which are scheduled? You know, not, not set the spin, if there's no active application with a scheduled hearing, anything with the scheduled hearing in front of this plan for P and Z, moving through council, at least get that list provided. Is that possible?
Sure. I, no, we have that. We can certainly share that. I.
Yeah. My council will look at it for themselves.
Sure. We, yeah, we can show you the list, the names of the projects.
And if it's an annexation, if it's a, whatever is quite frankly, a lot of the, the description that's on the agendas, at least as a start.
Yeah. Right. Yep. We have all that. And so we'll just send you, and in fact, it's probably in one of these. We'll send it to you. Um, we, we do have a, uh, one of our tabs that has a list of all file number, name, you know, so it's been paired way back. So we can send you that and just look at the ones that haven't yet been approved that are in process and get you that list. Sure.
Councilman Hoagland, was that what you were looking for from a?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Yes. So Caleb, yeah, we can, uh, together on that and get that sent out to council or
Sure.
Know how to use the tool appropriately. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Uh, Caleb, on this chart that you have up, that's, that you had said that was number of lots, but is that actual number of, on the multifamily, it's number of units, right? And the single family, it's lots.
Which would be the same thing for single family. But yes. Thank you for clarifying that because sometimes we don't, in fact, a lot of our multifamily projects don't plat. And so you get zero lots with 64 units.
Any additional questions? Or we'll bring Kurt up. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, so this will be part two of your discussion tonight. I'll segue a bit from what Caleb had presented. Uh, again, Kurt Starman at the city attorney's office, Mr. Neri and I are going to, I liked, uh, council president Hoagland's description earlier, a little tutorial, or maybe I guess I'll call it a high level primer on two topics that I think sometimes get conflated. And I want to talk about first about moratoria and what that means and what the implications are. And then also I want to talk about annexations and particularly category A annexations. I think those topics sometimes get mixed together. And so one of our goals for today is to kind of, uh, talk about both those things and separate those two topics for you. So with regard to moratoria, um, state law does provide, uh, cities and counties the opportunity to, uh, implement a moratorium on new growth under certain circumstances. And there are sort of two categories there. Uh, that I'll chat with you about today. So one is entered the, the header of an emergency moratorium. And I'll describe that more in a moment or two. And then secondly, an interim, uh, moratorium, and I'll describe that for you as well. So under that, under that category of moratoria, we have two flavors, if you will. With regard to the emergency moratorium, I think by the one, you know, the kind of the way we can think about that, I'll just use a, an example or two. But as this name implies, there's something compelling there or something that falls into an emergency category. So as an example, if you had a sewer treatment plant that was failing and could not accommodate additional growth or a water system that cannot accommodate additional growth. Uh, it may be that a city would want to, uh, implement an emergency moratorium in that circumstance to put a temporary cessation, uh, cessation on, uh, new development, new permits. And then, uh, allow the city or the county some time to correct that situation. I think importantly, I think it's one, one of the areas where this, this issue does get conflated is importantly, with regard to moratoria, uh, either variety, emergency or interim. Though the, the moratoria applies to, uh, development or permits, to be more precise, permits within the existing, I'll call it, we're going to stick with cities today, within the existing city limits. So it's not a, it's not, we're not talking about when we say that we use the word moratorium, we're not talking about development in the area of city impact or annexations. We're talking about putting a temporary pause on development within the city boundaries. So with regards to the emergency, uh, moratorium, an example like the water or sewer example I gave you earlier. Um, what the, what state law requires is that the, the legislative body, the city council make a finding that there is imminent peril. I'm going to talk about that phrase or term in a moment. But imminent peril to the public health, safety or welfare. And it was our police powers as a local government agency. And so that, that phrase imminent peril, I think is important. It's important also on the imminent, imminent moratorium, excuse me, the interim, uh, moratorium as well. But imminent peril, we don't have an Idaho appellate decision that has defined that term, but we can sort of extrapolate from criminal law and just from other areas of the law that I think is likely a court would define that term of imminent peril to mean, you know, something that is certain and something that's going to be an immediate danger to, uh, you know, within our police powers of public health, safety or welfare. That's a, in my opinion, that's a pretty high bar to say, you know, the, the, for a legislative body to make a finding there's imminent peril. And therefore we're going to put an emergency moratorium in place until we can address that issue. So that's, that's number one. I think it's probably fair to say, Mr. Neri, you know, having this discussion a couple of days ago, that really if I look at, um, kind of the balance there, really the law provides a lot of protection for private property rights in that context. Is that there's a very high bar to put, uh, put a moratorium on new growth or new permits. And, uh, the result of that is to protect private property rights. Another way that state law protects private property rights in this context is that there's a very short timeframe when such a moratorium can be put in place. So for an emergency moratorium, you make that finding of imminent peril, uh, which again is a high bar. And then under state law, that, that moratorium cannot be in place for longer than 182 days or roughly six months. So there's a, a timeline there and it cannot be, uh, extended beyond that six months unless you want to move into that second category that I mentioned of the interim moratorium. So I'll describe that in a moment or two. I think that's an important concept I just wanted to put on the table and we're, we're not, you know, today we're talking very conceptual. I'm just talking about cities in general, not necessarily Meridian or, um, you know, any projects that you're considering. But I think in a, in a broad context, just sort of in that context of a tutorial or a primer, there's some risk to a city, in my opinion, that implements an emergency moratorium, because you have to make that finding, number one, imminent peril, which is a, you know, again, a high bar. And then to the extent, you know, a court later decides that, um, that was not the case and that the moratorium was unlawful, it does potentially, I'm not saying it's a certainty, but it certainly, there's a potential to open up the door for a regulatory, a temporary regulatory taking argument that a developer or property owner was negatively impacted by that moratorium. If it wasn't lawful, there's a possibility of a takings argument, which could result in liability to the jurisdiction that implemented such a moratorium. So I just plant that seed again, in a very general sense, not, not with regard, anything is hard played today. The second form or flavor of, uh, moratoria is the interim moratorium, also codified in state law. Again, it applies to projects and permits within, uh, the city boundary, does not apply to the area of impact. So very similar in that regard. In, in a way, there's even a, uh, another hurdle or another finding, I suppose, that is required above and beyond the emergency moratorium. And that is that, number one, you still have to make, the legislative body still needs to make a finding of imminent peril with respect to the public health, safety or welfare. And so there's a second criteria as well. So we need to find imminent peril and the city needs to make a finding that the, that it's in the process of either adopting a comprehensive plan or an element of that plan, or is amending the plan. So it's sort of those two boxes that need to be checked for the interim moratorium and the apparel. And there's a, you know, other, a comprehensive plan is being adopted or being amended in some way, shape or form. Again, some of the same risks that apply to the emergency moratorium would apply in this context as well. I mentioned with regard to the emergency moratorium, there's a six month limit, uh, on that moratorium. Likewise, there's a simple, there's a limit as well on the interim moratorium. That's for one year. So, uh, in theory, you could go from an emergency moratorium into an interim moratorium, or you could just start with interim moratorium. But under that category of the interim moratorium, it's a one, uh, up to a maximum of one year. It could be shorter, of course, but no longer than one year. Uh, and again, some of the same risks I talked about earlier. So those are the two, uh, forms of moratoria. That, you know, that just again, to sort of just have a, a high level discussion about what, uh, what's available under Idaho law. I want to put a pin in that for a moment, put that to the side and talk now about annexations and particularly about category A annexations, which
Can we see if council has any questions on the moratorium before we move off of this topic?
Of course.
Just so we keep our.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Real quick question. So, um, would that mean that, that a city could, assuming there's a just policy decision to have a moratorium, that they could with either moratorium, you couldn't use it to annexation application? But it would apply to, for example, the issuance of building permits? Follow from an annexation?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Borden. So yeah, I'm a, I'm, I'm going to return to the annexation comment in just a moment. But I think in particular what the statute of visions is putting a hold on permits and building permits would be the prime example of what would be applicable. So with an emergency moratorium or interim moratorium, clearly that would apply to building permits that already, you know, to property within the city itself. The moratorium, either form, emergency or interim, would not have a direct impact on annexations because really what the, what the moratorium says is within your city boundaries, you can put a pause on permitting. Doesn't speak to annexations, but I'll talk more about that in a moment.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Kurt, real quick, I, I appreciate your examples of rationale or basis jurisdictions could use. Could a jurisdiction use, uh, a imminent peril argument? If the peril is being caused by a jurisdiction other than their own? For instance, the, the examples you referenced were, were water, wastewater, which as a city, we've got a certain level of control of making sure that we're, we're addressing that. But issues like schools and roads where we don't have direct control, can a city use a basis of traffic safety or the welfare of our students as a basis for, for enacting a moratorium?
Commissioner Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh. You know, the case law I have looked at and examples I've looked at have all been sort of, uh, services or physical plants and things like that that are under the city's control or county's control. So I haven't seen an example like that. I think in theory, you know, the law doesn't prohibit that. So in theory, we could go there. I would say on, on some of the examples you posed, like schools as an example, just to touch on that issue. I think this, the, the more difficult part of that discussion is, or part one is, those are things not within the city's control directly, number one. But perhaps even more importantly is, I think it's very difficult to make a finding that an incremental increase in student enrollment would have imminent peril on, on the community. That'd be a very, I think that would be a difficult finding to make. I'm not saying it's impossible. I asked Mr. Mr. Neri if he has an opinion about the first topic in terms of making the finding imminent peril when the peril is being created by a different, you know, an outside government entity as an example. I haven't seen any case law on that, but.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, like, yeah, I mean, it, it's a great question and whether the, the answer is at least undefined in the state of Idaho. And if you read the implications of the, of the statute and the base law, it's always been within the control of the people proposing it. When it's outside of it, especially on the interim moratorium, the requirement is that there are other findings. What are you going to do about it? There isn't one, then you can't even make that fine. So again, I have a court review that I don't know. Again, there's still appellate cases in the state of Idaho, so they've never gotten above a district court level. I couldn't tell you that it's an absolute yes or no, but there is certainly look at it, and Kurt kind of stated it, and we'll get to this on the, on the annexation side. I look at it as a meter. On what is greater into the property owner's control? Which is where moratorium sort of land, where the property owner has a lot more rights that have attached their property, what rights they have in developing their property. To the opposite end of that spectrum, which is annexation, where the city has a great deal more of interest and discretion on whether to annex property and add it into its. Though somewhere in that spectrum are other types of applications. For example, a rezon application is applicable to the district court. An annexation, annexation is not, Nile is not. Oh, that's why you've probably heard me say more than once, if you're going to deny a reason, we need a reason. It can't just be, I don't like it. It's got to meet comp plan, it's got to meet your code, it's got, it's got to have other reasons because we have to be able to explain to a court what legal basis did we have? And it's beyond just absolute discretion. So it falls a little further up the meter than complete discretion that you may have in an annexation.
We'll add, you know, in the back of my mind, I can't, I couldn't tell you the case name right off, off the top of my head, but in the back of my memory banks, I do, I think I recall a case that does, you know, dealt with floodplain type issues. That might come close to what you were talking about where, you know, where the floodplain lies is not a, a function of what the city did or did not do necessarily. It's a function of mother nature. And I think, uh, if I recall, there, there was a scenario where, um, concerns relative to floodplain, uh, issues was a reason for a moratorium. So there may be, that'd be sort of kind of related to something beyond the city's control or something the city didn't create or didn't cause.
And then, Mr. Mayor, though, to add on top of that, in that scenario, more likely than not, you're going to have either a willing to make a finding that someone else has a plan in place that will make a factor in that time period. Or you're going to be amending your comp plan to take that out of a building area. Oh, now you're needing that banner. You don't have a comp plan because it's flooding. And it is practical, it's everybody's city, based on, on various factors. There's the dovetail connection that you make.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, in line with that, I'm, I'm still not completely connecting the dots on, on the interim moratorium. Why it has to be within the timeframe of adopting or amending comprehensive plan? Help me connect the dots on why the moratorium must happen within that timeframe. And it, it's to me, the imminent peril and the comprehensive plan, that imminent peril could happen. You know, comprehensive plan in our cities are read every 10 years. It could happen year five. So then would you only have been able to enact the emergency moratorium at that point? Or I'm not really connecting the dots there.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pro. So I probably was not clear, so I apologize for that. So other, our two flavors of moratoria. With the emergency moratorium, the quite, and this is really just a function with the legislature adopted, when it adopted that, these particular statutes. Uh, with regards to the emergency moratorium, it speaks to the imminent, you know, you have to make a fight, legislative bodies make a finding of imminent peril. That's the box that needs to be checked to satisfy state law. With regard to the interim, um, interim moratorium, the legislation, I, I couldn't tell you why they did this or for what purpose, but there's actually two things need to be accomplished on the interim moratorium, which could be in place up to one year. And what the law says is that you have to be in the process of adopting a comp plan or amending. So I'll give you an example in a moment, but adopting or amending a comprehensive plan. And you need to make a find, if you want to do the moratorium, and you have to make a, a finding of imminent peril. So with regard to, I'm trying to think of a good example, let's take our, our sewer plant example from earlier. So we have sewer plant that is failing and not capable of, uh, you know, taking on new additional households in the near term. So, uh, you know, we may, the, the A city, just generically, A city could, um, be doing two things simultaneously. It could be say, we're going to revisit, uh, our comp plan, maybe densities, for example. We can't accommodate higher densities. We need to revisit our comprehensive plan to reduce densities in the area that is going to be developed in the future. And at the same time, we're going to put a moratorium in place until we can accomplish that, amend our comp plan and/or, you know, get the wastewater plant in, at a better position to accommodate new growth. So I'll bet, a good example or not.
Thanks, Kurt.
The second, second topic then I'll speak about, and Mr. Neri already, uh, touched upon some of the key features here, but is annexation. So again, I want to really draw that distinction when we talk about moratoria. We're talking about putting a pause on development within, you know, property that's already been annexed and is within the city boundaries. And I want to compare and contrast that with annexations and particularly category A annexations, which is what the city council sees most frequently. And as you know, from your experience, the category A annexations, typically they come, the applicant, the property owner is coming to the city with a request to annex. Uh, and all the property owners are in agreement and they consent to the annexation. So this is a situation where this property is not in the city today. They want to be annexed to the city in order to develop the property, perhaps at higher densities and receive sewer, water, other city services to accommodate that. So cities with the courts have held, with the, with Idaho law says, and what courts have held, Idaho Supreme Court in particular, is that cities have a great deal of discretion to make a decision to decline annexations. So a, a property owner comes to the city with a request and a, a legislative body, the city council has a great deal of discretion to decline to annex that property. And I'll go even farther in the sense of what the court has, has held is that under state law, uh, relative to annexations, is that when the applicant comes forward and requests annexation and the city council declines to annex that property, that decision is not even subject to judicial review. You can't, the applicant, the property owner has, couldn't even seek, um, redress from the judicial system. What the, what state law says and how the Idaho court, Idaho Supreme Court has interpreted that state law is that that's not even subject to judicial review. The city council's decision on that is final relative to the decision not to annex. So that's a situation where the city has a great deal of discretion to say if there's a, you know, for whatever reason, public policy reasons or infrastructure reasons that the city, if a city wants to slow growth or limit growth for some period of time by not annexing more property, there's a lot of discretion in terms of how the city council can deal with annexation requests. I think also, I mentioned in the case of moratoria, there's, there's some risk to a city that puts more, a moratorium in place in terms of a temporary regulatory taking. That's, that risk is far less in the case of annexation because those are legislative decisions that are not subject to judicial review. And so in terms of from a risk management perspective or liability perspective, much less risk to the city in making decisions like that versus in the context of moratoria. So in summary, yeah, I guess I'll say, and I'd be happy to answer questions you have about annexations or what additional questions you might have about moratoria. But I think, you know, some of the key points, I'll just reiterate it in in closing here is with the moratorium that, you know, it's a, it's a high standard to be able to make a finding that that there's imminent peril to the public health, safety, and welfare is a point I like to stress. The other point is that moratoria applies with, to development or permits within the existing city. We're not talking about annexations or the area of city impact just within the city itself. And that, you know, to the extent a, the city makes a, the city makes a decision to implement a moratorium and it's later reversed by a court, there is some potential for liability there due to a temporary regulatory taking. And then in closing on annexations, just to recap what I mentioned just a moment ago, is that that's an area where cities have a lot more flexibility and ability to determine how quick or even if the city wants to annex at all. And again, the risk there quite a bit less. So with that, I'm happy to stand for questions on either of those two topics and Mr. Neri and I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Thanks, Kurt. Is it, I read you loud and clear. It sounds like even while we were kicking around, didn't even apply actually, right? So moratoria for permits, things that are in the process. Annexations are different. Is there anything legally that prohibits us from dealing with add annexations on a blanket basis or in a systematic way? Or are we legally required to deal with each annexation separately?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Strater. Sounds not great here. So let me re, let me recap the questions. I think I heard it and make sure I got it correct. And the mayor can correct me or Councilmember Strater can do so. But I think the question was with regard to annexations, I'm gonna use my words here, but can this, can a city simply say, we're not doing any annexations as a blanket statement versus sort of on a, a sort of case by case basis? Is that the gist of the question?
Or hold them and only do them once every three months or, you know?
Okay. So I, I think what I would, I'll give you a couple of thoughts and invite Mr. Neri to to join me as well here. My thinking on that is, I think, first of all, I'll start with what I said earlier, cities have quite a bit of flexibility relative to annexations, but I think, you know, we could run into other issues, constitutional issues or otherwise, if, you know, decisions are arbitrary or capricious. So I would say it'd be better to deal with annexations on a case by case basis and have your reasons for saying yay or nay as opposed to a blanket policy. I'm not saying that isn't a possibility, but I think dealing with annexations on a case by case basis and having specific reasons to say yes or no puts, puts a city in a stronger position. As opposed to a blanket policies that says we're not doing annexations and, you know, with very high level reasoning and rationale for that. And then with respect to the idea of can, can annexations be, I'll use the term sort of bundled or packaged and dealt with on periodic basis every three months, for example, I think that'd be fine. I think that's within a city's discretion to be able to, you know, process applications as it sees fit. And if it's more if it's the city council's pleasure to deal with those, you know, in increments or in, you know, every three months or six months, I think that would be okay. And Mr. Neri, any additional thoughts?
Mr. Members of the council, I, I agree. I think the bundling certainly, I don't see that as problematic unless it's a staffing issue. On the other one, you know, the, as Kurt stated, I mean, every application should stand and follow. Other factors that may have a greater impact that, fair housing is one of them. Again, there are some expectations that when you have a comp plan that you're going to abide by it and to some degree. So taking a blanket statement makes it a little bit tougher to deal with. But from a challenge standpoint, as Kurt stated, it's not subject to review. You're probably, your bigger risk factor is the legislature changing the statute. Now, in the past, they have only generally gone in to change the statute when they believe cities in general have overreached their authorities and gone beyond what the legislature felt was appropriate. Oh, in a case where you're sort of going differently than that, you know, that that may not catch their attention or raise their temperature level. So those are probably the only cautions that have is that the legislature certainly has a greater control over that issue than the courts do at the moment.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hohland.
One question, Kurt, on on the process. I, I know of a community in the area, smaller town, that they have limited staff. And the applications they process for development, whether they're annexations or just development for for already zoned areas. They say it's, it's going to take length of time. We're only going to process them as as we can. And there's, there's no problem with saying, okay, there's a timing issue, there's a spacing issue. So if it's going to take nine months for that to come before council, it takes nine months. Are there any issues with with that? As seeing as you need to speed your process up or hire more people to handle the influx?
Mr. Mayor, Council President Hoadland, I think like a lot of these type of topics, I think if there are legitimate business reasons why a city, you know, because of staffing concerns or just the complexity of a project that takes additional time, I think that that is fine. I'll, I'll contrast that with if, if we are, if a city is sort of, if that's a pretext to slow development is to say, we're not going to get to it for nine months and so sad for you. I think there, there's a potential problem there. But if it's a legitimate issue of we have so many resources and we can only do what we can do within a period of time, I think that's certainly justifiable. As long as it's not a pretext for just simply, you know, slowing a process and maybe to the detriment of a property owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
You know, I wanted to thank Council President and in Bill Neri and and Kurt for bringing this forward. This is great information. I think that we've all been thinking about this for a long time and what that looks like. And, and so thanks for the clarity. I think that we needed this, this discussion this evening. So thank you so much.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, not a question, but just to thank also Caleb, Bill, and Bruce. Miranda, who's probably listening in, whatnot, for your work on putting this information together to help give us that foundation and basis. And if there are, you know, want to limit it, we don't want to take up staff time, but if there is something, let me know if there's a, a number that you really need. And we can, we can see what we can do with staff to get that, to get that number among all the other things that they do. So, but thank you, Kurt, Bill, as well.
Thanks, guys.
Well, Councilman Strater.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I've been one of the squeaky wheels. I just wanted to say thank you very much. I thought this was really good information. And I'd really appreciate receiving a copy of the spreadsheet at the appropriate time when it's ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Then with that, council, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, move, we adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. As have it, we are adjourned.
Councilman Strater, you with us?
Council will call the meeting to order. For the record, it is January 25th, 2022 at 6:03 PM. We will begin this evening's regular City Council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater. She is here. Councilman Burton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Yeah.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hogan.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time, as the pledge of allegiance, if we'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Our next item is the community invocation, which this evening will be given by Pastor Troy Drake. If you'd all please join us in the community invocation or take this up as a moment of silence and reflection. Pastor.
Members, Mr. Mayor. Join me. Well, Lord God, uh, thank you so much that we can gather here tonight with city business. And I know it's important to you. All matters of life are important to you. Uh, God, I just wanted to ask for a special prayer for the, our citizens tonight. Anybody in particular who's frightened or hungry or cold, Lord, that they would find their way to a friend, a relative, some kind of a service, a church, Lord, uh, that our citizens would be protected tonight from harm. Lord, we're also thinking of the, um, first responders, the paramedics, firefighters, our police officers. We're so grateful for them and we pray that you keep them out of harms way as they protect us. And, um, of course, God, just gathering here with these servants here. We just pray that you give them much wisdom as they consider the matters at hand. And Lord, you said that all wisdom comes from above. So we just pray that you'd impart that to them in an extra measure of grace for, um, you know, serving their fellow citizens in their city. So we just thank you for this great country and this great, um, state and great city that we have. And we, um, you know, just bless your name as you bless us and it's in your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Clerk, anyone sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up.
Okay, then we will move on to action items. First item up is a public hearing for the proposed fire alarm communication devices fee update. Um, and we'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Good evening, Ms., uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for, uh, providing this opportunity to answer any questions or concerns regarding the new and updated fees for permitting of installation and replacement of fire alarm systems. Um, the memorandum was provided to you a few weeks ago. But in summary, um, the fee changes for the replacement of fire alarm communication devices, uh, relates to the limited electrical license contractors. Uh, this was, um, enacted through the Idaho Legislature House Bill 292. We as a city cannot charge a fee of more than $125. Uh, this update, uh, to our fee schedule, um, will bring us into compliance with the new statutory language. Stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sam. Council, any questions for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, if there's no one signed up, is there anybody in the audience who would like to provide testimony? Or anybody online, if you'd like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature. Seeing no one wishing to provide testimony, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Close the public hearing on the proposed fire alarm communication device fees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the public hearing is closed. Next item up is item two, resolution number 22 dash 2306.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
That we approve resolution 22 dash 2306, adopting a new building fee, new building division fees. I'm authorizing building division of the community development department to collect such fees and providing that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 22 dash 2306. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the resolution is agreed to. Thank you, Sam. Uh, next item up is a public hearing to convey real property to Ada County Highway District for right of way purposes. Uh, open this public hearing with staff comments from Mr. Nary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Oh, this is much better. I feel like a talk show host. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the conveyance of property for the roadway, uh, that is going to be adjacent to the east side of Discovery Park. This is the new roadway that goes to the south section of the park. This also is the road that will, um, abut the fire station and police station as well as the new entrance to the park. So this is merely the action to convey that right of way to the highway district.
Thank you. Uh, council, any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the audience who'd like to provide testimony on this item? Or anybody online that'd like to provide testimony? Seeing no one coming forward, council, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
We close the public hearing on the real property, the, uh, the conveyance of real property to the Ada County Highway District for right of way purposes. Second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the public hearing is closed. We'll now move on to item four, which is a public hearing continued from December 14th, 21 for Aviator Springs, H2021 dash 0065. We will continue this public hearing with any comments from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, the only comments is just a reminder that this meeting was, um, continued to tonight's meeting in order to hold a community workshop to discuss development impacts and enrollment on area schools and transportation. The school board, um, met yesterday, but ended up continuing the discussion pertaining to this matter to February 14th. The applicant's representative Heath Clark met with the West Ada School District on January 11th and did submit a letter summarizing that meeting, uh, which has been included in the public record. And he is here tonight to speak to that if you'd like.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff at this time? Would the applicant like to come forward? You can say your name and address for the record, Matt.
Good evening. Uh, Matthew Adams, 462 East Shore Drive, Eagle, Idaho. Thank you. Uh, Heath Clark is also here presenting with me this evening. He'll need some time. I'm hoping we can get a full 15 minutes.
Yeah, your time is counting down, but yes, you have it.
All right. Uh, the continuance on December 14th honestly caught us off guard and left me frustrated. Time, energy and creativity has been invested, uh, into the, an excellent project. A project that we as designers, along with the developer and the city can be proud of. On December 15th, we requested a meeting with West Ada School District to gain a thorough understanding of their planning process and we are better for that meeting. Time, listening and understanding have eased my frustration. Uh, I want to say thank you to this council. Thank you for asking a tough question and seeking what is best for the city of Meridian. Because you asked the tough question on school enrollment, we've gained a clear understanding of the district's planning process. Because you asked the tough question on school enrollment, we come before you tonight confident that West Ada is positioned to serve the students of this project. So I'd like to talk specifics. Our team met, uh, Heath, myself, a couple of other members, met with West Ada staff on January 11th. The goal of this meeting was to gain an understanding of their process. The takeaway from that meeting, student capacity does exist for this development. West Ada is ready to respond to growth in the city of Meridian. West Ada has a data-driven process and works diligently to stay current. Based on this process, they have issued a revised enrollment projection for Aviator Springs. They are projecting 40 students rather than the original 67. The process is intentional. It's a planning approach that is efficient and fiscally responsible. When school capacity is exceeded, the, they implement the school capacity toolkit. I'll go over that in a moment. When new schools are in fact necessary, future school sites are available and bonds do pass. The district currently owns 10 future school sites in the area depicted on this map. I would like to note that within the surface areas analyzed in West Data's updated letter that was sent to planning staff on the 11th, there are three elementary school sites, one middle school site and one high school site. When capacity is reached in the study area and West Ada needs to build a new building, they have the sites to do it on. West Data issued the revised letter I mentioned on January 11th to planning staff. I believe that you have the complete letter in your packet. I'm showing just a small portion of it on the screen. We have discussed that West Data reissued the letter with the new, the 40 projected students. I want to emphasize some specific language from this letter. West Ada School District supports economic growth. Assuming the area's student generation rates remain the same and the developments build out as projected, the capacity of the elementary schools identified are projected to be at a maximum capacity upon completion of the 3,089 approved lots. The high school is also projected to be operating at or above building capacity upon the completion of the currently approved 6,559 lots. These projections do not take into account the impact of additional seats provided by education organizations outside of the West Ada School District, such as charter schools, private schools, home schools. We understand, our understanding of this letter is that it clearly states West Ada School District is ready to serve all the students from all approved lots in the attendance area. It is true, at some point in the future, these schools will reach capacity. West Ada School District has tools available to manage this outcome. Transporting students to alternative schools with available classrooms, attendance area adjustments, passage of a bond to build new schools to fit the enrollment needs. passage of a bond to build new schools to fit the enrollment needs, and portable classrooms placed on the property. It is, in fact, there is, it is true that these toolkit strategies are currently being successfully utilized today in the West Ada School District. Student capacity is available for students from Aviator Springs and the neighboring developments. West Ada School District has a planning process in place that is working. West Ada School District will enroll all students that register for the, for school. Other educational opportunities do exist that will relieve enrollment to these schools as well. We are again requesting approval of annexation, rezone, preliminary plat. Now, I just quickly want to mention, or tell a brief story. In 2018, enrollment at Rocky Mountain High School, 2018 seems like ages ago, pre-pandemic. Rocky Mountain High School was at 2,400 students. Capacity of Rocky Mountain High School is 1,800. So it's 600 over capacity. In 2018, my daughter, Abby, graduated after four successful years with the incredible support of teachers, coaches, staff, and administrators. On May 7th, 2022, Abby will graduate from Idaho State University with two bachelor's degrees, one minor, and plans to continue with a master's in genetic counseling. I acknowledge the many challenges faced by a city council. That said, school capacity is not an issue that is unique to now or to this council. As this story illustrates, a council formed around 2002 approved Brighton Corp's Quenzer Common subdivision, and a home was built on Legacy View Drive. That council's foresight allowed my family to grow and learn in Meridian, Idaho. It allowed my daughter to attend community schools. Abby was a Prospect Panther, Heritage Husky, and a Rocky Mountain Grizzly. It allowed Abby to benefit from the amazing educators and dedicated professionals. I ask that you take my experience, Abby's success, as the precedent for the dedication and adaptability of West Ada School District. Approve this project. Let the professionals of West Ada School District continue their excellent work. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise. I'm on a cold streak. I haven't been here for a couple months. It feels, I'm sure everybody missed me. I am, I appreciated Matt's comments, and I wanted to add a couple of different thoughts, kind of a different take on it. You know, given who I am, you can probably imagine where some of that's going to come from. I did really enjoy meeting with West Ada School District when we, when we had our discussion. We spent a little bit over an hour. They went over in great detail, the granular level of detail that they use with this new methodology that resulted in the revised letter. They are tracking every pre-app, they're tracking every application that comes in, they're tracking every preliminary plat application approval, they're tracking the final plat recording. They are looking at the average amount of time that between applications coming in and when homes are actually coming online to be able to identify within each one of their attendance areas, the actual student generation. And they're doing it within each quadrant now, rather than all the way across the city. It's, it was pretty remarkable, and I look forward to when, I know they're going to come to the council and present all that to you, and I'm looking forward to that. It was clear from that meeting that they understand what is happening in this attendance area, and that they're ready to address that growth. And there's a couple of things I really want to stress, that in this attendance area, per the letter, there are two elementary school sites. So in other words, they can triple the capacity if you look at the, at the numbers that are on the, on the, the letter. They have one middle school site and one high school site already acquired. Each of those sites are there, they're ready to go, they're not searching for them, they don't have to acquire them, they're ready to go when a bond is ready to be issued. So that stage is set, but their perspective is that they have to be good stewards of the taxpayer money, and they are not going to run those bonds until they know that the capacity is being completely used up. And so that's why we see the, the toolkit and all of these efforts that are being taken to make sure that the capacity is there, and they're not building schools that are going to be unused. So where does that leave us? And where does that leave you, right? You know, we as the applicants are feeling a little bit worried about it, and the city obviously feels concerned about it, and we want to make sure that you're not getting ahead of what West Ada is doing. So again, the, there's a couple of points that I would make. The sites are there. West Ada is ready to run the bonds when they determine that the time is right for that. And it has done so in the past with great success. I mentioned in my letter that, you know, it's five of the six since 2000 that have approved. Every one that is tied, that we could find that was tied to a specific proposal has, has been approved. But, so what that tells me is that stopping development unless there is a bond, there's like 100% ironclad certainty that a bond is going to be approved, it's not only unnecessary, given, you know, West Ada School District's planning and strategy, but for us as an applicant, it places us in, under an impossible condition, because it's not something that we can control now. It's something that will happen in the future when the capacity is, is there and West Ada makes that determination. And that's not even a determination that you all can make. It also raises questions of, you know, whether the city's going to have to impose a moratorium if we're going to decide that we can't approve development unless we know for sure that five years from now that bonds are going to be approved. And that's, that's also a very significant question. Now, with regard to this application in particular, it also raises some real significant planning questions, right? Because if we're going to say we can't approve this application because of student capacity, really what we're saying is that, well, what it could be approved with is maybe a 55 plus or something that's not going to have student generation. And, you know, I look at that, and that would just be a terrible outcome for this site. This site is immediately next to Hawaii High School, and it's immediately next to a future elementary school site. It will provide safe routes to schools, easy pathways, and as you've heard in the past, it's going to have an LDS seminary site in it and a Boys and Girls Club site in it. It's teed up for residential development for families to be able to enjoy this. So, you know, our, our overall point is, yeah, we, you know, the lawyer needs to come here and talk about scary things like impossible conditions and moratoria. But really what we're talking about here is a situation where West Ada has done the planning, they have the sites, again, two elementary school sites, a high school site, and a middle school site in the area, and just has to pull the trigger on the bonding when, when the time comes. So we would ask for approval on that, and we hope that we've answered the, the question as, to the extent that it was asked by the council. So we're happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Wasn't present at the last hearing, but I did watch the video, read the minutes, read through the, read through the entire project folder. So I think I'm up to speed. But I would like to ask some questions because I didn't get an opportunity to do that. Before I ask those questions, and I'll, I'll ask the mayor if I may ask my questions in succession, they'll go fairly quickly.
You're recognized for three minutes.
Too funny.
Three minutes, go for it.
First, go Bengals. No, so, thank you for going through that process yourselves with the district. Everything that you presented this evening, I was already aware of, most of it council's already aware of. What we're not aware of is what triggers the district to start utilizing some of these options. They haven't shared with us that they have made a policy as to what level of enrollment they have to reach to, to start putting these in place. Each one of these would require a minimum of two school years to get actually implemented. So while they are constantly tracking their enrollment numbers, they haven't said, okay, this is what's going to trigger any one of these solutions. And that's something that hopefully we will hear from them when we have our conversation. That's a missing piece for me as a council member. I've been reading these letters for five years. Nearly every hearing have we had conversations about this. So this is not new to us. We've already, West Ada's already shared with us, they're, all of this information. So we, we do not, I mean, we would love to have the confidence that, that Matt shared in the districts. I'm speaking for myself in this regard. I would love to have the confidence that the district is sharing with you. But in my years of history now on this, with Planning and Zoning Commission and with council, I haven't seen the follow-through. And so that's, just to share, that's where I'm coming from. But let's get to the actual questions. So Achievement Avenue, these are specifics now of the project. Is that a public road? What is that going to look like? Are there sidewalks on either side? Is there a curb? You know, I'm thinking, I have in my mind's eye, the road, if you're familiar with Compass Charter School, there's a road that runs from Black Cat into the school that's very undeveloped. And I don't want that to be a similar situation where we have students from two schools using that road in addition to residents coming in. So I'm curious what the, what the, that road's going to look like and function like. Secondly, the road on the south side, is that a private road? It goes through the high school. So is it, what, how is that going to function? Third question relates to the, the mayor's concern in the last hearing, which is the Boys and Girls Club and the seminary having homes that are facing the road where the public is going to be coming through and accessing those businesses. Have you had any more thought put into whether you would change the, change the layout so that that wouldn't be the case? And then, fourth question is, how are you going to set up the HOA to be successful to deal with these issues? There's going to be obvious overflow from the high school. You're planning for that from a parking standpoint, but the HOA is going to be the one that's going to be most immediately affected by issues with interaction from students coming over and trying to use the pool, students coming over and trying to use the play area, you know, trash. They're, they're the ones that are going to be the, the first crew that's going to have to deal with those issues that it's going to bring, having this very interactive community. So that's my set of questions. Thank you for hearing me out.
Mr. Mayor, council member, Pro. Thank you. First of all, I, I hear what you're saying about action from the school district. I have a different perspective as someone who works for the school district, and I've done dozens of projects for them. So we feel like they are a district of action. So it's an interesting conversation to have, multiple perspectives, and I think yours is valid. The, the roads, Achievement, and Sonya, I don't know if you have a, a site plan that you might be able to find. Achievement Avenue, which is on the north, is a public roadway, an ACHD roadway. It is a, I think that they call it a local collector, but it's one lane each direction, sidewalks both sides, and all of the roadways within the community are public and have sidewalks as well. So we feel like we have excellent access. I believe when you say the south road, there is a stub road to the south that will continue in the future when the south neighbor develops, but we had showed a, shown a secondary emergency access connection through the high school site. That'll be gated and only accessible by fire, police, and emergency responders. Seminary access, the mayor did bring up a perception or concern that there could be traffic coming by seven or eight homes. Interesting, you know, the parking lot at the seminary has six parking stalls based on the square footage of the building. ACHD considers it to be a zero traffic generator. So I really, I have no personal experience with a seminary, and I do not know how much traffic that creates, and if that would create a conflict. The Boys and Girls Club certainly have people picking up, dropping off children potentially. So there will be traffic generated by those uses. As we looked at potential other locations and the relationship to the high school, this location still feels best from our planning perspective. And then last, HOA and the parking, trash, students coming into the community, parking will all be issues. And they will work on those issues till the end of time, I believe. I think maybe the lesson there would be, we do pay attention to what happens in Mountain View, Meridian High, Rocky, and we try to do better, right? So on this community, we have roadways with extra parking capacity. So we've almost doubled the parking requirement of the city code. We are working with ACHD and Meridian Police Department on signage, which signage is great, but then it has to be enforced, and that puts a burden on police. But we are working with those groups, those partners, to develop a signage strategy, because parking truly is the greatest burden on the community next to a high school. You know, the pool, I'm not sure, right? Those are gated, and you have to have access cards to get in. People can get around that. I don't know exactly how that would play out. That would be interesting. I think you bring up some valid points. I think these are issues faced by all communities, especially those next to schools. And I think that, that what we've done in terms of design, spatial configuration, dimensional standards, exceeds code, and is thoughtful toward all of those concerns. But I would not stand here and say that they're all solved. I think humans are going to have to work at being good neighbors. Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Just one question. I don't want to spread rumors, but I heard yesterday that there may be a, ITD may be looking at a slight realignment of this roadway. How does that impact this application this evening, and to what extent? And I have no idea that they're looking to go on left, right, elevated? I have no idea. But if that were to be the case, would you request additional time until we figure that out? Or, and just from the planning, from the process up here, I don't know what happens if we approve something and, oh, they're moving over 50 feet to the left and through your property or more.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the heads up. We're not aware of that.
I haven't heard it from anyone official, but...
As recently as last week, we have been coordinating with the engineer on overets and different things in this area. So we haven't heard from their consultants. However, if this alignment were to change here, it would be highly impactful on Tucker Ridge subdivision, which is nearly completed to the north of this. But on our development, we've exceeded the buffer width by such a great dimension. We could actually absorb a pretty tremendous encroachment. The buffer requirement's 35 feet, and we have as much as 100 in many locations. So at a pre-plat level, I'm actually not too concerned, because I think we could adjust. And then what we, the, the issue would be staying compliant with the DA and making sure we have the right number of lots and things. But I, I think we could remain code compliant, even with a pretty significant shift. That is said, not knowing what that, if the rumor's true, and how much the shift might be. If, I, it's my understanding that ITD closed on this property. So it could be that the roadway could shift within the right of way, and could have no impact at all, and the asphalt moves a bit. So, yeah, they'd, they'd be buying lots instead of farm ground, and it could be a lot more lucrative.
So ITD currently owns the right of way that's on this line. It's not being reserved for them.
My understanding is they closed on that about two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there a, bails like to provide testimony? Mr. Clark, maybe one sign up?
Mr. Mayor, we do Travis Hunter.
Just a couple paper exhibits and a USB.
Say your name and address for the record. Please be recognized for three minutes.
Yes, my name is Travis Hunter, 2628 South Wiseway. I'm in favor of the Aviator Springs project. I don't have any issues with it. Just here before you, seeking some help with a future road alignment, a gentleman that works for us, Todd Tucker, he presented, I believe, the last city council hearing. I was just coming to bring some exhibits that would illustrate the... the requests that we're having. So I'm asking for Meridian to waive the 30-foot buffer requirement on the southeast corner of the property where the road intersects at our property, Woodside Avenue Investors, just south of there. So this, it's, it seems like the, the idea of this waiver is contemplated more for a scenario where there's residential lots or, or buildings that are close to the highway, such as the northern portion where you see the buffer in Aviator Springs next to those three lots. But in, in our future land plan that we have not yet submitted, but we will, we're going to be having a road that is going to act as the buffer along Highway 16 there. So it, the, the area that, that we're going to be seeking the variance on the buffer, if you could, so this, this first slide shows how it would be if we didn't get a variance on our application. The second slide, Sonya, if you could flip to that, shows what we would like it to look like if we do get a variance or a waiver on our application. And then the third slide just shows the reason why a buffer could be waived in this scenario. So as you could see, this is a scenario, this is showing a cross section of what it would look like with a 30-foot buffer. So on the right, you see the Highway 16 right of way, a 35-foot landscape buffer, two foot for utilities, five-foot sidewalk, 33 feet between curb to curb, sidewalk, another two-foot space for utilities, a setback. And then in our contemplated plan, we're looking at putting multifamily there, which would have a parking lot that's 75 feet and then, and then structures. So you could see there'd be a total of 237 feet between like a, a structure and the future highway. So it's just having a road act as the, as the buffer, I think, would satisfy the concept behind the buffer that you guys currently require with the road going here. And our property is kind of unique because it gets pinched as, as Highway 16 has the intersection or has the off-ramp there. It, our usable space has, it will be significantly diminished. And then also, the last thing to note is that's going to be an off-ramp there, a D cell lane. So there won't be the same high speeds on that section as there would be on, you know, a, a main stretch of the highway. So just for all those reasons, I, I figured I'd show it to you and graphically. And maybe you could understand it a little bit better. And we would just ask that you could give Aviator Springs a waiver on their 30-foot buffer just on that southeast corner where the road might intersect with a future road of ours.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Just to clarify, you, you're proposing the, the rendering that shows that road to run completely flush with the right of way, not, not the one that shows green space in between.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I guess, says, second question is, on the maps, you show a realignment of their pathway as well. In the first one, it looks like it would continue down, that a pathway would connect on the west side, east side of the roadway. This one, it looks like it's going to cross the road into some other location. In theory.
Yeah, I, I think there it would go on to, it would go on to a sidewalk. It's, it's an interesting concept because I don't know who would want to walk between a road and a highway where that path might continue onto our property. So having a path between a road and a highway just seems less likely. Someone might want to walk on the sidewalk instead.
So, so the top, this is a design element for them, not a continuation of something that's required from the city in a pathway, not part of our master pathway plan, that somehow being altered because of this proposal. I know it's generally, they're not specific. Just want to make sure that that's, I think, I think that's what that is.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what the master pathway plan is or what the impact on that would be.
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
Just a comment from when this came up last time, what, what seemed to make the most sense, quite frankly, was to, if this project were to proceed forward, is to keep that road as designed with the 30-foot setback. It's a future council and a future application that would determine whether or not what you're requesting is appropriate. Maybe none of us up here, who knows? So your argument, I think, is for a later date. And if it was as originally designed with the setback as required today, it wouldn't prevent you from making that request in the future to have it still go south, straight, to be adjacent to the right of way. It leaves a little more gap on the east side, but I think you're precluded for making the request at a future date when that property comes forward. I understand where you're coming from, but the, the, the project before us today as design, still having to go direct south.
Yeah.
It seems to make sense.
I, I understand what you're saying on the, on the process. If, if they didn't move the road slightly to the east, it, it will end up eating up usable area of our real estate if we can't align the road properly, if we have to bring it straight and then move it over. So it would impact us a little bit. If the applicant, if the applicant would be welcoming to that idea, which we've spoken to them, and I think they would be, I'd request that.
Sure. And Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
Concern, I guess, would be the, at that future application, that it creates some implication that that future council's okay with the waiver and realignment of the road as you presented. It may, but it may not. So if we, we open the door, so to speak, by doing what's requested, it kind of indirectly ties the hand of that future application to permit this. So I don't know whether or not that's going to be appropriate. That's the future. So that's just some thought of your standard request, but it's, might not be appropriate to adjust to this application.
Mr. Mayor. Travis, what, what is your timing of moving forward with your application?
Soon. It'll, it'll definitely be in, we'll submit definitely in the next six months. Waiting on some other moving pieces. Oh, Mayor Simison as well. So by the way, I, I called Merrill Sharp. He's the project manager for ITD for the Garvey, the Garvey projects. And I asked him, what have you heard about the alignment moving? Because this, you know, that would be a, we heard the same rumor and, and he, he said the alignment wouldn't be moving to his knowledge, but they might be asking for some additional easements. So the core alignment moving to that question, I don't know if that's a, I haven't heard official word from them, but I don't think that's the concern. But.
Mayor, follow up. So what you're asking is, is to allow the, provide that waiver for Aviator Springs. In the event, when you come forward, it at least allows them to plan that alignment to match yours, if yours goes forward.
Correct.
Okay.
And our, our application will come forth in the next few months.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm not a question, just a comment. Similar to Councilwoman Perrow, I was absent when this original hearing took place, but I did review all the information in the previous hearing. That's it. I just wanted to make that comment and then I'll reserve my comments for the end.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel.
Ms. Craig, anybody else sign up?
That was everyone who indicated they wish to testify.
Okay. Is there anyone present who would like to provide testimony on this item? If you'd like to come forward and state your name and address for the record and be recognized for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. My name's Sue Wagner, W A G G O N E R. And I reside at 6096 West Becky Drive, right at the intersection there of McDermott. So we're pretty much across the road from the new project. And I just wanted to state that I oppose the project.
Anything else you'd like to add on that for counsel?
Generally speaking, because of traffic and just a, just the, the quality of life where we live has just diminished over the six years that we've been there. We're constantly under construction with roads and, and traffic and noise. And most recently, we're right across from the new high school. So it's just, I'd like to invite anyone on the council, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to come and visit us on West Becky Drive. We're a small subdivision of 16 homes. Close knit neighborhood, very nice people. And perhaps someone would at some point like to hear what we have to say. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Caver.
Thank, thanks for coming. I think we do want to hear what you have to say. That's why we have these, these public hearings. It's, I know from a, from a citizen's standpoint, it's kind of frustrating. You want the whole council to come sit in your living room and, and see that. And we're, we're prohibited from doing that unless we all come together, which is, is a frustration. But that's why we have these, this process in place is because I think it's, it's important for all of us to hear from you and hear how this, this project would impact you. So if, if nothing else, know that we do want to hear, and I think that we get emails on applications every day. And I know because I get CC'd, council members reply and they follow up with phone calls when legally they can. We're under some really strict guidelines about when and how we can talk about an application, just like you wouldn't want me going to, to meet with the applicant privately to talk about his project. We also can't meet with the public privately to talk about that. But nevertheless, if you've got more context to share about how this application's impacting you and your family and your fellow neighbors' lives, I think we're all open to hearing that.
Agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Becky.
Councilman Holton.
Sue, I mean, sorry, Sue, Sue. Let's, you live on West Becky Drive, so. Sorry, it's all right, Sue. So I, I just want to ask you, West Becky Drive, I think we see it here on the map.
We did briefly see it.
Yeah.
On the last gentleman's map.
Right. And so that State Highway 16, it sounds like will shift traffic off of McDermott Road, which may become a, just a local road, access road and, and shift the traffic. Because you're on the east side of McDermott Road. Is that, do I have that understanding correct? Okay. So that'll be the, McDermott Road becomes kind of an access road. And then the Highway 16 becomes, I've heard it termed an expressway, if you will. So yeah, your quality of life, no matter what happens, is going to be impacted by that road. Even if, if we approve nothing out there, everything that's approved to the north and to the south will be going on that road. So it's, it's, it's one of those things that I, there is no win here for you, unfortunately, I don't think. It's just, and I understand it, live in North Meridian, and it was a rural place and a dairy farm, and it's not there anymore. And we're in the middle of a subdivision. So I, I, I sympathize. But yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood where you were in relationship. And, and in some ways though, with McDermott being a more of a private, you know, road for just access, hopefully that would. And if they do the Birmingham and the walls and what they say they're going to do, then that, that should help somewhat. Take the traffic off McDermott, move to that. And hopefully with sound barriers and whatnot, that would make it a little more palatable. So we, we shall see. But I did, I just wanted to confirm where you were. So.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sue.
Think we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Is there anybody else that would like to provide? Say your name and address for the record. Be recognized for three minutes.
Same last name, same address. Just to share, if there's any frustration, it's the, the density that's being approved. Home to the north of us was on seven acres. They're putting 24 homes in there. We purposefully moved to the edge of the county, thinking that, you know, the sprawl would open up as we got to the edge and that, you know, you build quarter acre homes or half acre homes or maybe one acre homes. But time after time after time, it's like, well, we could have put in 29 homes. And it's like, yeah, I guess. So that's my frustration is I've got neighbors that were Emmett Cowboys that are, they're done. They're out. With that many homes behind them, and they're running horses and cattle. They're, they're worried the kids are going to throw rocks at them, that kind of thing, because it's just another neighbor. So I would say my frustration that I think to myself is, what are the city planners thinking when they're just packing them in? Because we moved from a place where everybody was packed in. I mean, the neighbor sneezed and you feel like you had to say Gesundheit. You know, you could smell the neighbor's cigarette smoke. It's like, okay, well, we'll move out here to the edge. And that way, even as it gets built, at least it'll be bigger. You know, it'll be more space. And yet we're seeing the opposite of that. If you would keep that in mind, I think that's, that's the only thing I ask. Questions?
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Is there anybody else that would like to provide testimony on this item this evening? Would the applicant like to come forward for any final comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity. So first of all, to the Wagners, they're right, there are impacts in West Meridian. And if you drive down McMillan Road, and if you drove down it 10 years ago, it's, it's shocking. It's dramatic. I think that there's good planning happening and the land development is occurring in a predictable and positive way. That does not mean, it does not impact people who have lived there over time. So I, I hear what they're saying. I, I still remember, we had a pasture behind our house for 12 years. And then I have four neighbors along my back fence. And, you know, it took getting used to, but just like me, people want to live here. And so I accepted that that would happen. Our project, being on the west side of the roadway, the freeway, should have less impact to them than, than other projects may have. I will say, I do want to address quickly the, the mixed use nature. So this, the land use designation on the future land use map is mixed use neighborhood. The planning for this area does require that we have multiple uses. We cannot do just residential. We've done a residential product and then we looked really hard to bring in complementary uses. That could be school, residential. In, with that new highway edge, it's kind of backed up. It's not really, it's not like at a hard corner, like 10 Mile and McMillan. So the use of seminary, the use of Boys and Girls Club feels as complimentary as possible in that area. And then finally, I do want to just speak to Mr. Hunter's comments. We are also supportive of their project once it comes before you because access to the south helps everybody in this area have a more successful community. We are not opposed to what they're asking. We think it's implied that you are conditioned, without it being a condition, that you need to coordinate with your neighbors and create connectivity with roadways. That is a code requirement. We definitely will work with them to get that alignment. So it works for us and it sets them up for success in the future. We are not asking for variance at this time on that roadway, but we certainly are interested in working with them and making their project successful as well. I think that's it.
Ms. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Question for Matt then, to that point on, on that request for waiver and asking them on the timing of that matter and the timing of your, your development, if this were to move forward, is it such that if the waiver is granted in their, for their project, that that road can be shifted appropriately? Is that, or I, I think if we were to approve an application tonight, then I, I don't know how we would do that. So I don't know if that's, that, that's doable. So that's, that's kind of a conundrum is, don't know what's going to happen with this one, let alone the next one. So it's, it's kind of hard to make decisions on, on these types of things when they're, they're in this order. So any thoughts on how, how that can be adjusted if everything were to be approved? And again, no idea if it will be.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holton, that is an excellent question. So our, our timing, let's talk about our timing. We feel pretty good, but I don't, you know, I don't know what's going to happen. But I feel pretty good that we'll get approval. If we move forward, we are immediately into construction documents to move toward a permit submittal. Immediately, right now with workload, is months, right? So there's time before we submit to ACHD in the city for permit, construction permit. So there's time before we submit to ACHD in the city for permit, construction permit, to do that coordination. What I do not know, because I've never sought this type of variance, I do not know the timing of when it's appropriate for that to be granted. If it's at final plat, construction document or pre plat, I do not know.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I, I might ask whether it's Development Staff or Bill Neri. This is, this is kind of unusual. I mean, I have no idea. I would think if we were to approve this, it would have to be with that waiver to allow that alignment to occur. Because I don't think we could go back, if this were approved, and Hunter Homes Development comes before us. And if we were to prove that, to go back and say, oh, by the way, you now have a waiver because there's no application before us. Is, is that my thinking correct on that? Or are you going to be like my wife and tell me I'm wrong?
Mr. Rivers, the council, I guess, I've been uncomfortable with the request for the same reason that Councilman Borton raised. One, the applicant hasn't asked for that. It's not in the application. There's been no notice of that. It is a request. And I get it. And I get why they're making the request. And I get that, that Mr. Adams isn't opposed to it. But no one's asked for it anywhere except here in testimony. There's no writing for that. But that's a little concerning to me. Secondarily, as Mr. Borton stated, I mean, you are essentially tacitly approving the waiver on the project below without having it in front of you. It may not make sense to either this council or a future council because of where the roadway alignment is or what it looks like. Or, you know, again, I, 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 I get they want to meet their neighbors and they'd like to work with their neighbors and do that. And certainly, if, if it were to be as quick as possible, certainly at the preliminary plat stage, I think Mr. Adams could design that and to be in general conformance with what's being requested. I think that may be okay. I don't know if planning has a different perspective on that. But I am a little more troubled than just approving it when it's not really been requested. It's not really been sought as part of this application, but it's really a part of a future application. I think that can be problematic, because again, future application isn't here and it may not make sense when it is.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Yes, Sonia.
If I may just add what Mr. Neri said. A variance isn't applicable in this situation. The code actually reads that in the event of a hardship, applicants can request alternative compliance to the standard, which is a director level approved application, staff level. So if it's something that we deem may be appropriate in the future, we could handle it at staff level. But it's having no, no street buffer. And this, this isn't the subject of our application tonight, so we really probably shouldn't be going there. But it, it appears from the drawing that the applicant or the developer to the south is not wanting to provide a street buffer. And if that's the case, we don't have a variance for that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council. I do want to be a good developer neighbor to the neighbor to the south. However, I'm satisfied with my code compliant road alignment, and I'm not requesting a variance on that this evening.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
We've spent most of the evening discussing the residential piece. Can you talk with us a little bit about the mixed employment area? And how you're expecting that that will be accessed off of McDermott Road? Just give us a flavor for, I don't, I don't know whether there's going to be a requirement for, I think there's a concept plan requirement, but I don't know if there's going to be a requirement for CUP for individual portions of the project, or how exactly that's going to work, or, or what. So can you share with us? I know you may not have end users yet, but just give us an idea of what your concept plan is, you know, what you're expecting to have happen.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perrow. And Sonia, I don't know if you have a site plan that shows the Acima parcel or the East Most Parcel. Good question. So to meet the requirement of the multiple uses for mixed use neighborhood, we did include a mixed employment ME zone parcel on the east side between the future highway and the McDermott Road. We are showing, we're showing two access points, drive approaches basically, to a single commercial parcel to access that property. The, that owner and our concept plan that was in the, the packet indicates a 20,000 square foot research and development building with office space and some storage and a greenhouse building. And then on the remaining acreage, it would be test plots for testing moisture sensors for agriculture. So it's plots of grass, blueberries, raspberries, grapes, apple trees, those kind of things. So I think what you'd see is you'd see a 25, 20,000 square foot building. Sounds big. It is, depends on what it's next to, I suppose. And then you'd see a lot of landscape and moisture sensing, which is equipment about the size of a deck of cards that gets buried in the ground. So it would look very agricultural in nature and would be very appropriate for the, the current kind of character of that area. And I did not bring a graphic of that today. I think you have it in your previous packet. Is that, I hope that answers your question, but I'm willing to talk more if you have more questions on it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Yes, it does. I, I thought I looked through the whole packet. I didn't see it, but I will review it again. I will look again and see what I can see. One more quick question. A construction. What is going to be your primary construction access? And will there be rules around that, that access if it's going through near the school and whatnot?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perrow, that's a great question as well. Primary access for construction of this development would be Achievement Street. So it'd be Ojaihe Storm Ave and Achievement Street. And then we would enter from the northwest corner of the property. And of course, we have to meet, we would meet all city code for time of construction, time of day, trash collection, those kind of things. There will not be access through the high school site for construction. That access agreement is limited to emergency vehicles only of the city of Meridian. That actually can move through that high school parcel. If we're successful here tonight, we will be required to get the two landowners to sign a City of Meridian Emergency Access Agreement, and we'll submit an application for that agreement to the city.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I've got to challenge you and, and utilize you and Heath, get some information from you. Last topic, one of the items was school capacity. So the first question is, and I think Heath used the word granular detail. I think he did. So what's your understanding of what happened in your conversations with West data? At the October 14th letter says it generates 93 kids. And January 12th one says 40. So some of these are some of the questions we don't have answers to. So share with us what you know that West data determined it's less than half originally student.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, I will ask Heath to jump in if I get off track. It was 67 in the original letter, revised to 40. They use a multiplier of point seven, I believe, which is the old method. So it was 93 lots times point seven, you have a 67 projected students that would be housed in the development. The Marcy Horner, which has been with the district a couple of years now, they're using what Heath described as the more granular approach. So they are tracking every application. Once it gets built, they track how many kids actually live in those houses based on the zoning, based on the size of the home. They project actual information onto this, and they've come up with a different multiplier. So it's a more accurate multiplier that they're using. Do you want to add to that?
If I could just supplement, part of what they're, what you'll hear from them is they're looking at like, like type neighborhoods and seeing what the actuals are and trying to apply those to projections in the future. What they choose in that process, that's on them. But that's part of this new direction that has not been yet. I don't really know if it needs to be approved by the board, but that is part of the conversation that they're looking at sharing with us.
Can I ask a few more?
Go ahead. You should, Councilman Morton.
I mean, the reason I said 90, the letter says 93. That's why I said 93. Because 93 students will be generated. Yeah, I'm looking at it, letter of October 14. Nonetheless, the new letter says 40. So I mean, it's, the burden doesn't all fall on this application. I get it. But I mean, the, I think the confusion is only compounded by the new letter. I mean, I have no idea what they're talking about with determining and extrapolating some similar neighborhood. I don't, what does that mean? You know, 50, I have no idea. So, and the reason that just kind of is, is somewhat relevant is we're, we're looking for data that alleviates concern that there's not capacity. So I just don't know how to utilize their January 12th letter either. Because if it's not point four three students per household, for example, with the new letter, but some other, I don't know what to make of, you know, 5,700 approved plats in Ojaihe High School. Is that utilizing the new unknown formula? Is that a big number? Is that a really small number? The letter doesn't provide a lot of context. So what I was getting at is if you, if you knew and could just describe any granular detail of how they're going to determine student generation.
And I'd be happy to do my best. Obviously, we are the messenger, not even the messenger, we're just the third party. You know, we, it's kind of trapped here between two agencies that are deciding how they're going to, to do their future planning. So we're asking the city to, to be reticent or to acknowledge that in the sense that we're trying to portray that information for you. And, and, but, you know, we have a project that we, based on that discussion, believe will be adequately served. And here's, here's, I think, the, a little bit more information to help answer that. And, you know, if Marcy's watching, you know, and I get any of this wrong, I'm hoping that she'll, she'll send smoke signals up or something to make sure you guys understand that. But as, as I understood it, what they're doing now is rather than the point seven, you know, student generation that applies across the board, what they're doing is, is that they're, they've, they've created spreadsheets that apply throughout the district and take data that includes types of zones, densities, types of uses. And then they overlay that with Power School, and they can actually tell how many students are coming out of each different type of zone. They then take that data and within a grid that applies to the entirety of the city, they look within each of those grids and say, okay, these are the types of uses that are there. These are the types of generations that we're experiencing based on this type of zoning throughout the district. And so if you have that zoning, these types of subdivisions, we anticipate that the student generation rate is going to be X. So it, it, it actually allows for a lot more nuance. So you could have student generation in parts of the district that is point three. You could have student generation in parts of the district that's point nine, you know, higher than what it was before. And so I, to me, it gave a lot of comfort because it was like, okay, the city has looked at this, they've put together a comprehensive plan, they've said these uses are going to be there. The West data is following all those applications. They're tracking the pre-app meetings, they're tracking the approvals, they're actually averaging out the amount of time it takes to go from approval to actually having building permits and then to having kids show up on Power School. And then being able to plug that into their model and say, okay, you know, we, we overshot here with a point seven, where if we continue with a point seven, we're going to be building a school too early. So we're going to go look at this, we're going to use actual data, and we're going to say, okay, it's actually a point four three or whatever the number might be. So unless you think I got anything wrong there, Matt, I think that. Like I said, I thought it was a great meeting. I, and I was very impressed with this new methodology. I mean, it's, the tough part about it for you and for us is that it is somewhat reactive in nature, right? You know, they're, they're going to push the bond when they hit the threshold, and we don't know exactly what the threshold is. But we, you know, we as an applicant, look at this and say, okay, we're proposing a project in an area that has an attendance area. We know what the attendance area is. We know that within that attendance area, there's two elementary school sites, a middle school site and a high school site. So, and we know that they have compared areas that are very similar to this with zoning that's like this, and they understand what the trip generation rate, or it's not trip generation. I'm used to saying trip generation because that's what we're usually dealing with. They know what the student generation rates are, so they can, you know, we, they have some idea of when it's coming. And Meridian voters have been very, very supportive of these bonds when they've been required. And so, you know, from our perspective, you know, what we're asking for and is, don't, don't saddle us with an impossible condition, because we can't control when West data is going to, going to push that bond. But we are very comfortable that they're in a position to run the bond when it's necessary, you know, especially given that we have the, the extra school sites that are already available in this location, and they've provided with you all with this additional data.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I had a similar conversation with our own staff, Miranda, our own planning staff. She shared with me that although they are reviewing this data, and they have been consistently reviewing data, not to this level, so they have, they are stepping up in how they're managing their data and reviewing it. They typically have not made any decisions about what they're going to do with that information until they do a facilities plan, which they have not done on an annual basis. They are going to start doing that, but that's not going to be for a while yet this year. So we really don't, we, we know that they're in, in the process of gathering data for themselves. We still don't know when they're actually going to do anything with it. And I don't know what their new facilities plan review is going to look like. I don't know what the timing of it is. I don't know how long it will take them to actually take that information and, and act on it. And, and they can't tell us that yet until the, until the plan, you know, until their facilities plan is reviewed. They can't say, hey, we're going to take Meridian's information and our information, and here's what our capacity is, and here's our building capacity, here's our program capacity. And we're not saying we're going to wait until we have all those nuts and bolts to make these decisions. We can't. We have to have some level of trust, right? But we, we really do want and are seeking some more confirmation from them that, that, that they're really, they really do have a plan to do this. And so I just want to share that, because it's my understanding that, yes, they are, you're, you're correct, they're reviewing this. They're not going to do anything with it until they do a facilities plan review. And we don't know yet when that, what that's going to look like or when that's going to be. So I'm not sure if they've shared that timing element of it with you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perrow, no, they, they haven't. As I understand it, it is going to be more regular than, than in the past, which I think is a good thing, too. You know, we're all living in an environment that's a lot different than eight or 10 years ago. We're all trying to understand how to keep up with this. You know, as in, for purposes of this council's review, you know, I would just say that you, there's a lot of fair questions that you're asking. Not all of them do I have the answers for, because those are the eternal, internal machinations of West data school district that none of us have control over. But you do have a letter from West data that says exactly what the situation is, all the data that they have, and they're not saying we don't have capacity for this. What they're saying is, is that once we start reaching build out of the lots that are approved in this area, we're going to have to do those four things that Matt described. We're going to have to look at redistrict or moving boundaries, we're going to have to look at temporaries, we're going to have to look at busing, and then we're going, going to bond once we know that the capacity is taken up. And as I understand it, what West data is asking for, which I think you're asking for from your constituents, is that everybody just be patient with them, that they're going to have to go through all of that at that point before they That they're going to have to go through all of that at that point before they get to the point where they feel comfortable that they need to build a new facility.
Counsel, additional questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
We're going to have some discussion, presume before we close the public hearing, just. And I said it before, it's not this applicant's burden to solve this problem in the single, at this particular time. This is step thirty-two of their thirty-two step process. So. Appreciate the added context with the school district. I do, I just have a different take on the magnitude of the concern. Problem with this particular application by itself. Wouldn't suggest we move the roadway if it were to go forward forty-five feet is the request. It's just the reasons stated, I don't think that would be appropriate, but. What I do think exists, even in the January twelfth letter is you have so many, we, we have so many approved parcels within the city. That is far more than ever could be transferred to another school without capacity. Not this applicant's concern, but there's, and you could run that model today. There's not available capacity in all the schools to bus them around. I mean, the average for the approved lots in attendance area, these are two to three thousand kids. If you've got nine thousand lots in one middle school attendance area, assuming it's point three per, I mean, it's thousands. At least that's the data we have. If it's all wrong, let's get it figured out, but it's thousands of kids. There's not thousands of seats in current schools. What are schools in portables? Are our kids thousands of kids in portables? Forty-five in a classroom or double shift? I'm just saying the same thing again. If those are, those are the solutions. I don't like that. It's going to, if I, if I misspoke on a statistic, let me know.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you know, the, the council member Borton, the, the letter on January eleventh actually gives you the numbers in terms of the projected students from the so the projected students from approved development for the Pleasant View Elementary area is six hundred and eighty. That's approximately the same as Pleasant View and there are two existing acquired elementary school sites within the attendance area. So there's potentially three times the capacity at that point and beyond, you're in terms of acquired sites, you're actually beyond what the approved numbers are. So the numbers are there. We're not, we're not speculating. And I understand that there's, that I think I get the impression that you don't necessarily. I don't want to put words in your mouth. You don't necessarily trust the methodology is what I'm hearing. But the methodology is the one that's being provided by the provider. And we have to, we as an applicant need to know that we can, you know, this is the agency that's providing you the comments and I'm having a hard time with the, the idea that we're, we're looking at the agency providing the comments and saying, we don't trust the data. That, that's, that puts us in an impossible position.
Mr. Mayor. I could respond, and this is the bigger conversation we have to have with West data, but for example, if there's now some new formulation that says they've taken this application, they've compared it to like subdivisions and for example, determined that this subdivision generates middle schoolers at a, at a teeny fraction of the magnitude of that it generates high school students. How in the world is there any data set that can do that? Because they're saying nine thousand approved middle school lots generates nine hundred and thirteen kids, but sixty-five hundred approved lots within a high school zone generates more high schoolers. It just, I've got a thousand questions for them. Again, it's not your burden to answer. But what happens, and the reason why I have these concerns is if this letter provides any value to us. I need to feel comfortable that the underlying analysis makes sense. Because I have this discomfort, my philosophy in school district will certainly service these and put kids, they'll put them somewhere. And they're not going to put them on the street. So of course, there's always a way to get around it. I'm not comfortable. This is why this, this topic is going to get pressed this spring with a solution that kids can get packed in or bust around and ship them off for twenty-four hundred kids in Rocky Mountain. It's atrocious then. It's not fair to the kids. And I don't know if there's a public resource that's more important. We have some indirect responsibility for. So. Again, I'm, I love the, the debate and challenge, but their letter has created more questions for their methodology. We're supposed to look at it and say, okay, I feel comfortable that these schools can fill all of these students. And in light of the bond tolerance. So.
Let me ask, let me just point out a couple of things. First of all. When they do the analysis, they actually generate student generation figures for elementary, middle and high school that are different. So they actually have a specific number for what they expect from elementary, middle. It's not a toss it out there and those numbers can shift between the three. The larger question and and I appreciate you saying that, you know, this isn't, you know, our job to solve it on this one. And I, and I again, feel like I'm suddenly been knighted as West data spokesperson on all of this. But I, you know, the questions that you're raising, Councilmember Borton, I think are, are, raise a lot of pretty difficult implications for the council's relationship with agencies. Like for example, so do we then say we don't trust the trip generation rates on an ACHD report? And so therefore we're not going to I mean, but I, I think it's, I think it's a fair point, Councilmember Borton, because that's, that's almost the exact same point you're making here. And I'm looking at this and saying that, you know, these are, these are agencies that have provided, the, the agencies that are directly responsible for providing the service. They, they've provided the letter. I, I'm having, having difficulty with saying that the letter is not trustworthy and can't be relied upon by the council because then what can you rely upon? And what could we bring before you? Because, you know, obviously we, you know, as a due process matter, need to be able to, you have the council relate to us, you know, what are the standards that you're applying to this application? What are the actions, if any, that we could take in order to get an approval? And what I'm hearing is that that you don't trust the agency. And so therefore there's, I don't know what the standard is. Now, I, I appreciate that.
Councilboard.
So let me be crystal clear. This has nothing to do with trust. This is understanding the methodology, if it is to have any import on whether we make a discretionary annexation decision. Whether amongst all of the things we consider, school capacity being one of thirty different things. There's any weight that we can give the data to help us understand the methodology behind it. As what's happened in the last ninety days. Hopefully for the better, but there has been a drastic shift. As if the prior data must have been wildly inaccurate or of less value than we had originally thought. Because perhaps this new formula is of much greater value. Perhaps it's more accurate. Can't wait for that discussion with them. But it's just really different. The bigger question is a broader policy consideration. Forty could be spot on. Maybe sixty-seven was spot on. But broader consideration is everything presumes that bonds get passed. We'll talk about ability to bus. Ability to change district boundaries in light of existing school capacity. You know, these, how broad are these other solutions to find space for nine hundred to eleven hundred kids if there's none. Not your problem solved. I love the discussion. To you and anyone from West data that's listening, this has nothing to do with trust. This is just trying to understand and to provide value and weight to what they're sharing. Decision, that's all. Appreciate the discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holman. Heath, you know, you know, Star Middle School shows big numbers for the approved lots per attendance area and whatnot. But do you know, happen to know, and he, and he might not, and that, that's fine, but I have a sneaking suspicion that the bulk of Star Middle School is located in Star, which is a growing community. And they are moving forward with their growth. Do you have any idea what, by chance, what that might be? They are the majority of lots in that particular attendance area?
Councilmember Holman, I don't have the specific dimensions for that. You know, whenever we're doing this, it's a snapshot in time. And so, you know, that's the, that's the data that exists as of now.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I guess.
Councilman Holman.
It, it's difficult to ferret that out, I realize, but at the same time, we look at doing one thing and if the communities that surround us that are in West data do another, we're going to feel the impacts. We're going to have to approve bonds for growing schools or if we're not approving any growth, it's their growth. And yet our taxpayers will still, still, still be paying for that. And, and so it, it's just this interesting dilemma that we find ourselves in. And, and I think your application was a victim of timing of when, when this came forward, following a discussion of of an application in South Meridian. And that's, that's an unfortunate part of this, but because it's, it's a good project. So now we have to figure out what we're going to do with this information. And do we say, okay, West data, you provided us with this updated letter. This is what you say it's going to generate? There's no trust issue here, then, okay, then we make that decision based on that information. And again, I've talked about this before. This has been a priority growth area for our community. We're invested, we're investing in a fire station. We're investing in a police precinct. We're with ACHD on the roads and maximizing and expanding those, those roads to handle that, the traffic loads that are out there. So it, it, it's hard to me to step back and say, okay, we're, we're going to have to disregard this to some degree. And, and I just, I just can't go there. So that's, 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 that's the dilemma with this. And I, and I know it's a struggle with a lot of council members and it's something we've given a lot of thought to. And we'll probably come down on different sides of, of a conclusion, but, you know, we all have to reach that point of what we find acceptable or not. And and to me, if this is what the school district says, then okay, that's what we have before us and that's what we base our decision on. So I'm comfortable with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just quickly, the, you know, in addition to it being a priority growth area, it is right next to OY High School. It is right next to an approved elementary school. That's, that's where we want kids to be living and walking, walking to school. So. And, and this is the evidence that's in the record before you is the January eleventh letter from West data school district. That's the evidence that's in the record, which should be considered purposes of this, of this decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Heath, in your conversations with West data, did they share with you their priority plan for when these elementary schools will build out? And the reason I ask that is two reasons. One, I know that the bond that they were ready to put on the ballot in March of twenty twenty was only going to include an elementary school that was in the south side, Southeast Meridian. To my knowledge, that priority hasn't changed. So the next bond that will come will not include either of these elementary schools, which is still another, if we pass the bond next year, best case scenario, and it gets built in two years from then, you're at least three or four years out before you're going to build the school they do intend to build. No idea what their plans are for bonding for the two that are in Northwest. So that's why I asked if there's some information there shared with you that we're not aware of, is you're saying to us, hey, you should trust this because they're, they have real estate for two schools. But the difference in your analogy between something that ACHD does and something that West data does is I have a five-year plan with ACHD that says here's how much revenue we're bringing in. Here, here's how much you think it's going to cost. Here's the timeframe for when we want to build it. Do they have the right to modify that every year? They do. But at least we have a plan to look at that says, here's how we got to the, these, here's how we got to these determinations and why. We don't have that with the school district. So yeah, they are two different things. We can't lump them all in the same group and say, hey, they're another government agency. Are you going to trust them or not trust them? So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious if you, if you've heard any more about what their plans are, because it's not my understanding that they have any plans to bond. And, and truthfully, if we're going to talk about bonds, I'll share this with anyone who's asked me. I feel like they missed, missed a good window of not running the bond in twenty twenty that they were planning on running in nineteen. And at the time, at the end of two thousand nineteen, they were one hundred percent convinced that that bond was immediately necessary. And they chose to hold off not because they don't think it's still not necessary. It's because they, they were concerned that COVID would create an unnecessary burden on taxpayers, that there would be tax implications for people as they lost their jobs and potentially lost their homes. It had nothing to do with their enrollment going down or not having a need for that bond to be passed. And they still yet haven't decided when it's going to get passed and we're three years later. So I just, these are the kinds of things as, as, you know, we, these are the kind of things we are needing and seeking to understand. So.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pearl, I, I don't have an answer for that. Eda, when we talked to West data, one of the things they said to us is that we can't promise a school site too far in advance or we just catch heck from everyone forever. Because we didn't end up building the school that we promised and that the realtor told us was coming. And so that's a lot of the reason why they don't do that, as I understand it. Again, not West data's spokesperson here. With regard to the ACHD versus West data comparison, I wasn't suggesting that they're one and is the same and totally the same. But they do have technical analyses that's based on formulas that they internally understand and that we defer to because they're the expert agency that provides all those, that provides those services. And again, that's the evidence that's in the record and obviously all of our decisions have to be based on evidence that's in the record.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holman. Unless anybody has further questions, and I'd like to spare Heath the, the duty of responding on behalf of West data. A lot of these things. I, I would move to close the public hearing on H twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six five.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring the fact by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. As have it in the public hearing is closed.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just to kick off conversation and and see if we can move something forward here. We've, we've, we've had this discussion. It's, it's been dominating in our conversations and a lot of developments. Each one is different and, and, but, but the, one of the arguments is based on, on school capacity. And for me, on, on this one, it, it just turns to the fact that data, the West data has indicated that this, they find it acceptable that the forty school age children from that is, is not burdensome. We know down the road that there might be issues. I, no doubt about that. Councilmember Borton, you, you're looking at data that is, is correct. And how they handle that is in their court and their timing. And I, I, I just, until we hear from them that with absolute certainty, they have imminent peril, to use the words used earlier today. For, for students in the district, I, I just don't feel comfortable turning, turning down a development application that meets everything that we're asking. And so I guess to just kick things off and see where it goes, I would move to approve. After considering all staff applicant in public testimony, I move to approve file number H twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six five as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
I have a motion, a second, and recognize Councilmember for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I my, my thoughts have changed on this developments from last time. I you know, I, again, I sat with Matt on the different committees with regard to planning department and comprehensive plan committee and open space committee and, and, and many others. And, and looking at this application, I think there's a lot of really good things about it that get me excited. I thought it was very well planned out, some unique amenities for the kiddos and some passive open area that I think that a lot of folks are looking for.
Passive open area that I think that a lot of folks are looking for in development. I think that it's. In our priority growth area. Sitting right next to a high school and other potential school sites. At the end of the day, I'm only able to, and this is my opinion, and with no disrespect to my fellow council members. I have an enormous amount of respect for their opinions as well. This this is mine. I I I feel like. It's it's important for us to make decisions based upon what's in the packet and what's the information that's in front of us. I don't think it's fair. To. To. Deliberate on what. West data may or may have said. In conversations. I I echo the words. Of Councilmember Borton. I'm I'm really excited. I think we're all really excited to sit down with West data and to hash this out. I'm grateful for Marcy. I'm grateful for Miranda and for the continued dialogue between our two. Bodies. I think it's extremely important. And I think that we've never, as long as I've been on council, we've never had such great information. Regarding schools and school enrollment. So. With that said, until we sit down and chat with. West data and and hear from the horse's mouth what this information looks like, how did they get there? Why are they recommending it? I I I'd have to go with what's in the packet. I have to go with what's in front of me. Those are the decisions that I. That I'll that I'll make. And so I this evening, I'm I'm in favor of this application this evening. And I with the caveat of. Very excited to sit down with West data and to figure out. Once and for all what this looks like going forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, um. I I have a lot of thoughts, but I think. There is a lot of merit to the idea of batching annexations going forward to help with planning discussions. This was continued specifically to hear directly from West data. And I think the disconnect is caused by West data because they have had representatives of West data in their personal capacity. Not share the same commitment to the action items that could alleviate capacity issues. And they themselves have said that they have a looming issue. So for me, I I need to hear from them. I'm super glad that the applicant has been proactive in meeting with them. But a letter about a meeting that I wasn't part of doesn't help me with my overall concern. With the data, with their commitment as an agency to maximize their capacity. And in fact, if they said. We're in alignment and our philosophy is to maximize capacity, and here are the steps we're going to take. That's the exact kind of information I'm looking for. But in the absence of that, I see a huge pipeline of potential development. I see a pretty robust amount of deliveries that are coming. I better wrap this up before it goes the wrong way. But there have been a lot of. Issues, I think, with what are their steps going to be going forward and the commitment of that board to redrawing boundaries? I also feel like this isn't the right time for this annexation. I think that this application would benefit greatly from a delay, not only so we can discuss with the West data school district. That would put this applicant on the same timetable as other applications that have been continued for that same conversation. And I also think that the potential for Highway sixteen to move around is a pretty big point. And we would benefit from figuring out if that's going to happen. That's where I'm at. I'm in favor of a continuance. I don't expect the applicant to solve the school district's problems, but I do think there's enough of a concern that we need to get to the answer and that. A continuance for a few months to do that is the way to go. Particularly, I understand this is next to a high school, but it is in a priority growth area that is on the edge of town currently. Those are it for my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I was. Pretty much in favor of this project. We saw it a month and a half ago. I think it's location. Amenities. Density. I think we've got ninety three buildable lots and about forty acres. Seems to really fit well with the area. I was really supportive of the continuance because I wanted to hear from. Councilmember Borton, I appreciate reading. It's not an issue of trust at all. I think that it's because we trust them so much that I think there are some concerns. But the fact of the matter is, we've received. Inconsistent data. The data that we received this month is different than the data we received last month, which is different than the data we received a year ago on projects that come from West data. And so I I'm concerned about the inconsistency of data that we're getting. Councilmember Schrader did an excellent job of summarizing. Some of the public testimony that we heard and and why that's so important, particularly from on folks who work in 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 West data. So. It's hard because I I wanted that conversation so I could feel really confident in moving forward. I think that we need to get some consistent information from them, and we need to hear some better communication. From them, not just. You know, they they can't turn students away, right? They they don't get to put up a close sign. So the amount of students that any project generates, they've got to accommodate. I really want to hear from them that not only will they continue to do that because they have to, but they've got a plan in place to be able to do that. And. Councilmember, to to your comments, what does that look like over a ten year period? Because we do, we have, this is a priority growth area. I it's one of the reasons I've been resistant and reluctant to priority growth areas is I think when we start driving traffic, we start to create some of these problems. But I I don't have enough information to feel like a denial is warranted. Had a significant amount of testimony with public in favor of it. It is right next to a school. It's a high quality development. I think more than anything, it reinforces that we've got to be more selective at annexations. Whether that means batching or or more deliberative in our in our denial process. But there's not enough of a threshold for me to be supportive of a denial tonight. So if the motion was for approval, I'm certainly in support of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I agree with Councilman Schrader and and Councilman Cavanagh. I really would like to hear from the district and don't have a comfort level of approving. Really personally, in any area of our city where we're having conversations about school capacity. Until we have that meeting. And I am sympathetic very much to the applicant's. Feeling of of being caught between two agencies. It certainly is not purposeful. But our duty is to really make sure that we're doing its best for our city as a whole. And sometimes factors come into play that aren't specific to the individual application and design. And so the only thing I would would add in addition to. Councilman Schrader, who I thought did an excellent job with her explanation, is that Councilwoman Borton expressed his concern about the considerable decrease in students. Proposed. From a common sense standpoint, you have a ninety three lot development next to a high school. With a pool and a lot of green space. You're gonna sell these homes to people with children. And forty students are is less than, it's it's like a half a student per home, less than that. So the real realistically. Forty students just doesn't even make common sense, whether they've used a student generation rate or not. It, I mean, it doesn't. So. That's another reason why I have just really want to hear from the district before I make a decision. I had I had two. Respected developers call me this week and ask me. Why, you know, is the city gonna gonna? Share their thoughts with us? Are we going to hear some consistent messaging from the council members? They're feeling this pull that you're feeling now, which is that we all have different thoughts and opinions on these things. And they asked me to please start working on a consistent message. So since we recently. Continued an application for this exact same purpose in a different area of the city, I'm in favor of doing the same with this.
Any bails like to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor. I do have one comment. I I just wanted to make sure people understood my motion. I did not include anything about that waiver thirty foot buffer. In the southeast corner. I I think Councilman Borton made a very good point that that's a future application. And that and the applicant is not requesting that. And and, you know, Mr. Mary's comments help solidify that for me. So that that's not part of this at all. So. Just want to make that clear.
That's quick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
No.
Burnt.
Aye.
Pearl. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Or ayes, two nays, motion carries. Thank you, and much more conversations to come. Next item up is number five, which is ordinance number twenty two dash nineteen sixty four.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt. An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain city owned real property to the Ada County Highway District for right of way purposes consisting of approximately. One point six six acres located at Discovery Park twenty one twenty one East Lake Hazel Road. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest on behalf of the city of Meridian, the deed and other documents necessary to complete the transaction. Providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Council, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Would it be like it read in its entirety? If not, the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Move that we approve ordinance number two two one nine six four with a suspension of rules.
Second the motion.
I have a motion second to prove ordinance twenty two dash nineteen sixty pointer suspension of rules. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring that by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything on our future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
There was there was remarks of. Ways that we might manage. Our applications. And. Be creative and try and craft solutions. Some of the issues we've confronted, this is just another example of of. Confronting. Capacity concerns that are incremental. And bits by bits where individual applicants. Have individual incremental impact and we are. We struggle with perhaps recognizing the compounding effect and having an effective way to deal with it. So. Let's put on a future meeting topic, perhaps a workshop discussion amongst the seven of us. Some creative tools we might utilize. And just for illustration purposes, the comment about batching annexation applications. Hearing them as they come in and then continuing them to a date certain. And then deciding them on an aggregated date is just an illustrative example of, let's try and be creative. Help ourselves make more. I guess informed decisions based on aggregated data and compounding impact. So.
Totally noted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
It's the mayor and president, council president's pleasure. I I'd like to. Have a conversation at some point about whether we. Still believe our priority growth areas to be what we'd like them to be in relationship to all the concerns. That we've been discussing on the last few applications. I'm not necessarily suggesting a proposal that we change them, just just as I'm I'm hearing, you know, we. We've. Stated that there are areas that we'd like to grow, and yet we continue to run into challenges that cause us to to question whether we're going to annex. And I think that. I feel a personal desire to have that conversation so the public can understand where we're coming from. Because there is confusion being had. And and I I'd just like to. See what we can do about that. See how we can clear that up, I suppose.
Do we noted? Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, who we adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn. I'm favoring that by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Good night, guys.